Good morning, everybody. I'm calling to order this meeting of the November 18th, 2025, meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the rule. Supervisor Nelson.
Here.
Supervisor Lee.
Here.
Supervisor Lavignino.
Here.
Supervisor Hartman.
Here.
And Chair Capps.
Here.
Please join us in pledging allegiance to the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next item of business is the approval of minutes, two sets, because we had a special meeting on November 3rd and we had a meeting, our regular meeting on November 4th. May I get a motion, I guess, for both?
Move approval for both.
Okay.
Second for both?
Thank you Supervisor Nelson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Madam CEO, please give us your report.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. This morning, I have four updates. The last will be an update on our November storms that we've been enduring.
Great.
But before then, some good news. I just want to announce that the Santa Barbara County Public Defender's Office received a national award for innovation excellence from Journal Technologies this past week. The award recognizes the office's work customizing and advancing the E-Defender System, a platform that uses data and dashboards to support legal case management. The Public Defender's Office was selected for more than 250 eligible agencies for developing custom modules that streamline holistic advocate data entry, consolidate client information, and strengthen data-driven decision-making. This innovation brings the community public defender division data into a single client-centered view, improving service to clients and the broader community. Journal Technologies plans to incorporate features of this module into their core E-Defender product, and we know that the Public Defender's Office has been a huge advocate proponent for using data, and we want to congratulate them. And Matt Sperrledoz, Matt, I just asked you how to pronounce your last name and I got it wrong again, Matt, Sperrledozy, Sperrle, Sperrdel, Sperr, Matt.
Sperrdelozie.
Sperrdelozie is here, so we just want to congratulate the Public Defender's Office. Okay, the next one is also for the Public Defender's Office, is reminding us that they, this is the time for the annual sleeping bag drive. The Public Defender's Office is collecting new, and like new, sleeping bags, warm clothing, and new socks and underwears to support individuals experiencing homelessness this winter. Donations are accepted at the Public Defender's Offices in Santa Barbara and Santa Maria through December 11th, with distribution events scheduled for December 12th at both locations. And Erica Brokoff, we appreciate all the work you're doing for that. So thank you very much there here as well, so appreciate all your work on that. Lastly, in the holiday spirit, the county is collecting donations for the annual Toys for Tots campaign with drop-off boxes available at county facilities in Santa Barbara and Santa Maria, as well as county fire stations. The Board of Supervisors will participate by presenting their donations at the December 9th meeting, and the community is encouraged to join by donating new unwrapped toys through December 17th. All toys will be, will stay local and be distributed by the unity shop. Additional information on these donation opportunities can be found at our website under News and Announcements. And finally, we wanted to get an update for your board on the November storms. This morning, we'd like to provide the board an update, and as you know, we've all experienced a storm, several inches of rain to our area over the past few days. Joining us in person today to provide an update, we have Emergency Manager JD Salsito from the Office of Emergency Management, Chris Nedden, Director of Public Works, Deputy Chief Anthony Stornetof with Fire, and Under Sheriff Craig Bonner. They will each provide an update recapping the storm impacts and how the county responded and what's ahead. The first speaker, please.
Good morning, Chair Capps and members of the board. As CEO Miyasato said, my name is JD Salsito, and I'm an emergency manager for the Santa Barbara County Office of Emergency Management, or OEM for short. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. County OEM has been tracking the storm system since early last week, right around the Veterans Day holiday, and since then, we've been considerably busy. I'd like to give you a high-level update on some actions OEM has taken to date regarding the storm system. First, OEM has been coordinating closely with local public safety agencies and county departments, including the County Sheriff's Office, Fire Department, and Public Works Department, to understand the current situation and how the storm may impact our local communities, including those who live in and around the Lake and Gifford fire burn areas. OEM has also been working daily with the National Weather Service to get the most up-to-date forecasts and be able to share that information accordingly. Related to that, OEM has been sharing information with all of our public safety, with all of our local partner agencies countywide, and collecting reports from them, to make sure that they are able to understand the situation and make their own independent decisions, and make sure we understand what they are experiencing. Finally, OEM has been maintaining the major storm webpage at readySBC.org and posting to our social media in both English and Spanish. And as a reminder, the major storm webpage on www.readySBC.org has the latest storm information and updates, tips on how to stay safe and prepare for significant storm events, and hyperlinks to other helpful resources. Looking forward, rain remains in our forecast, and as such, OEM asks all community members to be aware of their immediate surroundings and be prepared to take action if needed. Furthermore, OEM asks the community to look out for your neighbors and be aware of any vulnerable community members who may need assistance staying safe. And finally, the County Office of Emergency Management urges all members of the public to register to receive emergency alerts from the Ready SBC Alert System. To do this, simply visit www.readySBC.org and click on the Register to Receive Emergency Alerts button. Doing so is free and really only takes a couple of minutes. Remember, if we can't reach you, we can't alert you. Thank you again for this opportunity. I'd like to now turn it over to County Public Works Director Chris Nedden for his update.
Good morning, Chair Capps, members of the board. Chris Nedden with Public Works. I think 30,000-foot level, this storm was, in the county was, everything went really well. It was like a good amount of rain, but not too much rain for the most part. There were some areas like City of Santa Barbara that experienced flooding. I think one of the takeaways is, you know, these storms can mean different things for different areas, and all it really takes is one cell to kind of perch in an area and rain intensely for a short period of time and creates a lot of issues. So while overall it was a good storm, there, it was, there were areas where if it had kept raining at some of the intensities it did, we could have had some issues, so we're fortunate that we didn't. And as JD mentioned, it does highlight that we all need to stay vigilant and people need to be watching their particular area and react accordingly. In terms of some statistics, this has been one of the wettest winter years, water years to date that we've had in our county. We eclipsed the 1983 wettest start on record, and in City of Santa Barbara, it was the wettest start in the past 127 years. So while it has been a wet start, that doesn't necessarily mean overall that the year is going to be a wet year. So we're at about 44% of, of the rainfall in a water year to date, and we're at about overall 460% of a year-to-date wetness. Some of the numbers that we have in Santa Maria area, we got about three to four inches in the high, Lompoc was four to five in the high, Guadalupe was about in the high two-inch rainfall rate, or rainfall totals. South coast in the urban areas, they got seven to 11 inches, and San Marcos Pass, 15 inches, and the Kachuma Lake area got about eight inches. So a fair amount of rain for that storm. In terms of the reservoirs and, and river levels, we're, we're seeing low flows in the rivers and creeks, so everything has subsided in the creeks that were flowing high on Saturday night, and the big rivers, Cayama, Sisquik, Santa Maria, San Andres are at the low flow to no flow range. And then in terms of reservoir capacities, there wasn't significant changes to Kachuma, and all the other reservoirs are at their levels, essentially pre, pre-storm levels. Twitchell still isn't high enough to be on the sensor, so. The, the roads all fared really well, working with fire and cities and OEM and Caltrans. The crews were working throughout the weekend and taking care of the downed trees and the fallen rocks and the small slides and things like that, but there was no major damage on any of the county roadways. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, Supervisor Lavignino.
Not a question, just a comment for folks that, I just want to commend you in the flood control department on the website that is my dad's actual favorite website, but it is, it, it gives you all the information that Chris just gave you, so you can, it goes through probably 15 different parts of our county. It updates every morning, it gives you year-to-date what precipitation we're at, percent of the year, goes through all of our reservoirs, and it really gives you an idea of, as you stated, that the difference between what like we saw in Santa Maria compared to what you see at San Marcos Pass and once you get in Santa Barbara. So I think all I, I, I don't know the exact website, but I just Google Santa Barbara County rainfall, and it takes you right to the Flood Control District hydrology report. So, good job whoever handles that.
Thanks. Supervisor Lavignino through the chair. I did write down website, I forgot to plug it, so thank you for doing that for me. And yeah, it's really easy to find, Santa Barbara County Rainfall, and it exactly has all that information.
I mean, along those lines, it's not necessarily your, your department to track, but I did see so many images of cars getting stranded with the flooding, particularly in the city of Santa Barbara. Do we know in terms of injuries, we have a sense from anybody at OEM maybe, or hopefully I didn't hear a lot of tales of, of injuries, but certainly that was a big concern, and tried to get the word out ourselves. I know that's something that Ready SBC does of just, don't drive, turn around, all those messages, but.
Chair Capps, I, yeah, I don't have any information on that, but I haven't heard of any.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Hartman.
Is more rain forecast?
Supervisor Hartman through the chair. Thank you for that, too. Yes, we do expect some rain later in this week. From what we're seeing now, there's a lot of uncertainty in the models, but if the rainfall sticks to the current models of, you know, half to an inch, everything should be accommodate that pretty well. Turn it over to Anthony to follow up. Thank you. to follow up. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Chair Capps, members of the board, Anthony Stornetta, County Fire. Chris kind of covered a lot of the stuff I was going to hit on, but I'm going to kind of just talk about, to answer your question first about injuries, stranded vehicles.
Thank you.
There were no injuries that I know of, talking to our off-area partners. There were some stranded vehicles in Santa Barbara and some flooding Santa Barbara Montecito Carpinteria. There was a large tree that came down by the Montecito Fire Station. Those were kind of the big ones. You go east of town here, by the golf course, it's still closed, there's some flooding there, but other than that, just minor debris along the roadways. And for us, for call volume, it was kind of about the same you'd expect in the winter weather like this. But I would kind of want to give you guys a glimpse of what it's looking like on the ground. So yesterday, I spent my time driving around the lake fire and looking at what, what's happening on the ground, because as Chris mentioned, up in the San Az Mountain Range, we got up to 13 inches of rain. But you go to Sisquik, where we were last week, Supervisor Lee, and it was only two inches of rain, and it was still brown last week when we were out there. So I went to Queima this morning, drove on the way back. So we got some really good flow coming through the Queima River right now, lots of room to expand, everything looks real good. I went in Pine Canyon, Supervisor Nelson, where we spent some time back there on the fire. There's some debris back in there, there's some damage to the road, but the residents are still getting in and out. Those are kind of our concern areas out there on the 166 corridor, the Madre and Gifford, so looked at that. And then, like I said, yesterday, going along Fox and Canyon, looking at the river drainages and everything. The lake fire's looking really good. We got some good growth from last year, although it's not deep-rooted growth, we have growth, we have some good vegetation out there that's holding everything back. Figueroa got eight inches of rain, and along Almo Creek, all the way down to 246, where we usually see problems, there was no problem. So the basins are good, the basins are absorbing. Twitchell looks really good. So other than that, on the ground, we're, we're looking pretty good, and there's a lot of room for expansion. So unless you guys have any further questions. Thank you.
Actually, I, I do, Deputy Chief Stornetta, I represent a lot of bluff area, and we had, we did have a cliff fall, and I know thanks to Fire and to our Sheriff's Department for, for being on the ground and helping, and I hear that recovery is, is a positive one there. Thank, thank goodness. But can you just please talk, I woke up this morning with clear skies and had that urge to get out and walk. So many people are going to be doing the same with, you know, wanting to walk along the beach, along the bluffs. Can you please talk about bluff safety and, and the stability of our bluffs right now after a storm?
Yeah, and you know, sand can usually take a lot of water, but it's also a detriment sometimes to the soil erosion, and what occurs under that, and especially with the large waves, you saw there's a lot of erosion that occurs. So yeah, that's a good message, and I can work with SCOTTSafe, CROPO, and maybe that's a good point to send some messaging out for that.
Yes.
That's a great idea. I was telling the guys this morning, driving around, I almost got stuck myself, and just to stay on the roadway, I was like, man, I'm smarter than this. But it almost happened today, and I was out there with no cell service. So that's a good reminder, and you know, we will put something out for that, because it is a huge concern. People think they see the sun out, and then things are, are safe, but that's not always the case. And as Chris mentioned earlier, we're looking at another half inch to two inches coming too. So that's only going to come on top of the saturated soils already. So thanks for bringing that up.
So it's two body lengths away from the edge, is the rule?
Is the rule. I don't even think I get that close, but.
Okay, there you go.
But thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. I'll just wrap it up. Obviously, my partners have done a great job of kind of bringing everybody up to speed on what has occurred, but I just want to reassure everyone that there is an extensive amount of coordination and communication that is occurring constantly. We were on phone calls every single day with the National Weather Service, as well as all of our county and state and federal partners, trying to figure out what we had coming, and whether or not it was necessary to take protective actions, and ultimately to communicate that out to the community. And, you know, we, we did experience localized impacts with these storms that came through over the past couple of weeks. Fortunately, none of them rose to the level that we were concerned for immediate life safety concerns, which is when we would ask people to leave their homes with evacuations and such. But we were constantly evaluating that, to include not just what was coming, but what has already occurred, right? We spoke about that we now have saturation on top of everything else that has occurred. We are confident thus far of what is coming at the end of the week, is going, that our, you know, community is going to be able to absorb that, but we are still in communication and will remain in communication as it relates to that. The one thing, and just to kind of round it out, it's really important that each of us, as community members, are paying attention to what's going on, you know, whether that is getting on the websites, or getting signed up for readySBC.org. We need to know what's going on. We know our community better than anybody else. I mean, we're all professionals here, we know the community as a whole, but each of us know our property, our family, better than anybody else. And it's important that we think in terms of that and what's coming. And if we need to prepare for something, if we need to get our family out, that we should do that ahead of time and not wait for somebody to tell us to do that. So again, just really important that everybody's paying attention. You know, the, the collaboration has been awesome throughout these storms. It will continue to occur, but each of us needs to, to pay attention, be ready, and to protect ourselves and our families and our, our neighbors, as, as came up earlier. Thanks.
Thank you, UnderSheriff Bonner. Supervisor Hartman.
Yes, I think this is for you, UnderSheriff Bonner. So previously, we've had a lot of issues with homeless in the riverbeds, and, and warning ahead of time and trying to make sure that they were out. We've done significant clearing of encampments in the riverbeds, so I wonder if you could report on that, or our CSD, what we know about that, and, and where they, where people can go who don't have homes when it's raining.
Yeah, so I'll probably let him come up to talk to some of that, but obviously, we've been collaborating all along with CSD and, and your office on, and the City of Lompoc on this. And we are continuing to work on not just to make progress in, in getting folks out of the, the riverbed and other areas that are not conducive to, you know, life, but also to make sure that folks aren't going back in there. You know, we haven't hit the point like we did in years past where Kachuma was full, and they were making releases on top of all the additional storm-related flow that was occurring. So we haven't reached the point that we were having to go and fly and make announcements to this point, however, you know, that's certainly coming if, if the, the rain continues as, as is. But I don't know if Jesus wants to come up and talk about the.
Good morning, Chair Capps and members of the board. Yeah, the, so we do coordinate, we watch the weather like everybody else through the EOC activities when, when they are active, and we notify our service providers to go out along, not necessarily with, and accompany the Sheriff's Department, but in addition to, you know, encampment areas, especially in riverbeds, when they're unknown to be populated by folks at that time, or at least checking to make sure that they're not. And we, we do have warming centers that we, we send out, you know, throughout the county. There's three or four different locations that we also spread the word to unhoused individuals through service providers and the Sheriff's Department in, in times like that.
So temperature triggers the warming centers. Does rain as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Temperature and rain.
Thank you to our speakers. That's the end of our presentation this morning.
Well, yeah, thank you so much to our, our first responder team. I hope this recap really gives a sense of how so many different entities are working together. This storm was so lengthy, so much rain, and we're just grateful that so much minimal damage, really, when we look at it, the totals. Really appreciate, really appreciate all the work, and we'll brace ourselves for the next one. Okay, thanks to our CEO. The next item of business is the administrative agenda. When did, oh, oh, your announcements first, Madam Clerk, excuse me.
Chair Capps and members of the board, I do have a couple quick announcements this morning. An addendum was posted on Friday, November 14th, 2025, adding administrative item number 36 to today's agenda. Administrative item number 36 is from the County Executive Office. It is regarding the appointment of Garrett Huff as the County of Santa Barbara's Fire Chief. Prior to board action on administrative item number 36, in accordance with Government Code Section 54953, Subdivision C3, the Fire Chief's salary information shall be summarized verbally, effective December 8th, 2025. Garrett Huff's bi-weekly salary will be approximately $11,639, with benefits consistent with those received by other appointed Santa Barbara County Department Heads under Resolution Number 25-218. The addition included in the addendum has been posted and made available online to both the board and the public. With no request to speak on this matter, the board may add this to the balance of the administrative agenda, but I do believe we have at least one board member who has polled this item. Additionally, we received a request from the department to continue departmental item number one. Departmental item number one is from the Public Works Department, and it is adhering to consider recommendations regarding the adoption of a proposed transportation impact fee ordinance for the Public Works Department services. The department is requesting a continued to the December 9th, 2025 board meeting. And lastly, for information on the Board of Supervisors' methods of public participation and instructions on how to provide public comment on items listed on today's agenda or during general public comment, please refer to Page 2 of the agenda. Individuals that would like to provide verbal public comment may do so via Zoom by registering in advance via the link available on Page 2. If you have any questions, please contact the Clerk of the Board's Office at area code 805-568-2240. Again, that number is 805-568-2240. And that concludes my announcements for today.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So now we'll move on to the administrative agenda. Would any board members like to poll items? I have already polled A18, A36, and I'll add to that list A5 and A33.
Chair Capps, I can have a roll call vote on A13?
Sure. So that leaves us A5, A13, A18, A33, and A36.
And Chair Capps, members of the board, I have requests from the public on A6.
Okay.
And A18.
Okay, so one, two, six, six total. So now I'll entertain a motion to approve the balance of the administrative agenda, except for those six that I just announced.
So moved?
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Okay, let's move on to our resolutions. Administrative item number one. And now, we're going to switch things up, and I will be reading administrative item number one, which is a resolution proclaiming November 17th to through 21st, 2025, as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week in Santa Barbara County. Whereas, and let's not compare my reading versus the person who normally does this, whereas California counties provide many services that are essential to the lives of Californians, and whereas the position of Clerk of the Board of Supervisors plays an integral role in the function of California county government, and whereas the work performed by the clerks of the board is a time-honored and vital part of local government, and whereas the clerk's duties of record-keeping is revered, their work among the earliest recorded on behalf of the public, and clerks have long pledged to maintain their neutrality and impartiality of the proceedings of government. And whereas the California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Association, an affiliate of the California State Association of Counties, is organized to promote the principles of good government, to represent the interests of the clerks of the board with legislative bodies and other professional organizations, to encourage the development of professional growth and education, and to support the objectives of all regional groups established within the association, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of clerks of the board across the 58 counties of the State of California. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Barbara does hereby proclaim the week of November 17th to through November 21st as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week, in recognition of the high level of services bestowed upon the people of the Santa Barbara County and the people of California by our clerks of the board, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Santa Barbara County, State of California, this 18th day of November 2025.
Your amazing clerks. Our whole office does such amazing work.
Behind the scenes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, Chair Capps and members of the board, for the record, I'm Jaclyn Alexander, Chief Deputy Clerk of the Board. Thank you so much for recognizing the California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week. I'm grateful to be here, and even more grateful to work alongside such an incredible team. Joining me here in Santa Maria is Deputy Clerk Leah Graham, and tuning in from Santa Barbara, our Deputy Clerks Chelsea Lindsey, Catherine Douglas, and Sarah Mayer in her part-time capacity. I also want to recognize Sheila de La Guerra, who's out of the office today, but very much a part of the heart of this team. Every member of the Clerk of the Board's Office is vital to our success. They are the magic behind the curtain, the reason our operations run smoothly, whether things are calm, or let's just say, character building. While counties may be organized differently across the state, clerk, clerk of the board everywhere use a tremendous amount of judgment, expertise, and independence to support the Board of Supervisors, the Assessment Appeals Board, as well as other boards and commissions, and of course, the public. Clerks ensure that the board, county departments, and members of the public remain informed and connected through accurate and accessible information. But if you ask most clerks, they'll tell you their most important role is being the legislative historian. The full recorded history of the county lives in our care, and that's a responsibility we never take lightly. And even though this team prefers to stay behind the scenes, very happily, I might add, I wanted to take this moment to shine a light on them and all the clerks who came before us. I also want to extend that recognition to the clerk of the board offices across California who carry out this work with the same dedication, precision, and pride in service. Their commitment ensures that the legislative record is accurate, complete, and preserved for generations. Thank you again for this recognition today. It truly means a lot to all of us. COB for life.
Supervisor Lee.
I just want to say thank you, and you are truly the heroes behind the scenes. So thank you for your work. I really appreciate everything that you do.
Yeah, I want to just chime in as well, and I loved the resolution, the, the points about the history of our government, the points about the impartiality, the, the points about just keeping things functioning. It's so important. All of you, you know, who participate, come to our meetings, all of this works so smoothly. And, and Jaclyn, you're such a good leader, but your team is also so strong to keep us just humming along. So I really, it's been a joy to work with you, particularly this year as chair, and it was wonderful to be able to honor you all and your whole team. Thank you. That's our one resolution for the day. So we will now move on to the administrative items pulled by the board. I believe that's number five.
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number five is from the Behavioral Wellness Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding a services agreement with the Camp Recovery Center LLC for Alcohol and Drug Programs Substance Use Disorder Services for fiscal years 2025 through 2027.
Yes, Director Navarro, as I gave you a heads up, I pulled this because questions came in from the community, from one of our advocates about this contract for residential beds. If you could just explain and sort of address some of the concerns potentially, really just making sure that there's contact between clients and be well. So if you can address some of the concerns and explain.
Good morning, Chair Capps, the board, and county staff. I'm actually going to let Melissa Wilkins.
Okay.
Branch Chief of Alcohol Drug Programs answer the questions.
Great.
Good morning, everyone. Yes, so we are excited to be able to present this contract to you all. There's been lots of conversation around the need for additional residential treatment beds for substance use disorders. To get this contract in place, we went through a competitive recruitment process, or procurement process, I should say, and that included a request for proposals. And so with any addition of new providers, I know there's probably concerns and questions from family members and advocates in the community to make sure that we're doing our due diligence when we add new providers. And so we have gone through not only the procurement process, but also really ensuring that any residential provider that we contract with is licensed for, through residential licensing with the Department of Healthcare Services, is in good standing, and is also drug, medical, health certified. And so those They do follow up with clients once they're in the residential treatment program. So they're a point of contact for the client, who they can reach out to at any time when they're in treatment. And then our care coordinators also assist with the discharge planning process, so that we're really making sure that there's a smooth transition back into the community following residential treatment. And for these providers, Tony and I were just talking, we would really like to add, being that we're adding new residential providers, that additional layer of surveying or following up with individuals after they're returning back to the County of Santa Barbara and just finding out from them how their experience was at these out-of-county placements. And so we'll be looking at putting that process in place as well, just to get an additional layer of feedback from our clients.
Great, thank you, because I know the fact that it's in Monterey is not ideal, but I know that there aren't also a ton of options locally in our county, so thanks for addressing that piece of it.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, well, that answered my questions. I appreciate it.
All right.
Okay, I am happy to move staff recommendation on A5.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to the next pulled administrative item.
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number six is from the Behavior and Wellness Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding a second amendment to the services agreement, Board Contract Number 23-026 with Recover Medical Group PC for Drug Medical Organized Delivery System outpatient treatment services for fiscal years 2023 through 2027.
And we have one request to speak from the public on this item here in Santa Maria, and I believe it's Sheila Kelly. I mispronounced that, my apologies.
Good morning. I will admit right off, I did not choose appropriately, or did I? I chose this one, Behavior Health, because it's affecting all of my friends and families' behavior and their health, not sleeping, possibly drinking. I know of lots of people who need a lot of help, and I would like to know what your plan is to help innocent women of color to keep them safe from both the real and the fake ICE agents out there? We've been told that we can't call 911 for help, but these people, they're our citizens, our friends, our family, and didn't we just pledge indivisible and justice for all? So what's our plan? Why can't we call 911 for help? We see someone that needs help and we can't call? ICE has just taken over our entire world? Living free in our brains? I mean, you're all looking very stunned right now. I don't know, like I said, I possibly didn't choose the right one here, but I would like some answers, especially as a woman. I've been fighting for women's rights with my older sisters since I was tiny. We shouldn't have to keep fighting for equal rights, and now women aren't safe to walk the streets, especially women of color? I know no one wants to take this one. Anyone?
No.
Yeah, I can just explain. It's not a chance for dialogue. This is just a comment. So per the Brown Act, the way that we're organized here, it's not a chance to get in a back and forth. So we're just here to listen.
City meetings in other cities, so, okay. That's fine, so it's just on the docket, and you guys can discuss it privately?
No, we can't even do that, actually. We just listened to your comment.
Okay.
It would have to be formally agendized, and we have had it on other agendas.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Okay. Well, just know that we're all concerned.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on that item.
Okay.
I'll move A6. Staff recommendations?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we can move to A13.
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number 13 is from the County Council. It is to consider recommendations regarding an agreement for professional legal services with outside council-ren public law group, and there is a forfeit but required on this item.
Okay, Supervisor Nelson.
Yes, thank you, Chair Capps. I just was asking for a roll call vote, just to keep my vote that was consistent with our closed session that we reported out on this issue. I'm going to go ahead and vote no on it, so if you could just give me an opportunity for a roll call, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Okay. Roll call vote. When you're ready.
And Chair Capps, members of the board, can we please get a motion to approve staff recommendations?
I'll move. Second?
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Supervisor Nelson?
No.
Supervisor Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Lavignino?
Aye.
Supervisor Hartman?
Aye.
And Chair Capps?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, then we'll move to A18, which I believe was pulled by Supervisor Hartman as well as the public?
Yeah.
That is correct.
Why don't you go with the public first?
Okay.
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number 18 is from the General Services Department and the Community Services Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding the acceptance of easements from the Lompoc Valley Parks Recreation and Pool Foundations, Inc., granting to the County of Santa Barbara Public Trails System and Parking Area for recreational access, APN 093111019, RP Folio Number 4100, and this is in the 3rd District. And we do have two requests to speak from the public on this item. We are going to Zoom with Heidi Jones, and then we will remain, or return to Santa Maria with Dave Baker. Heidi?
Hello, Heidi Jones here, agent for the applicant. I am just available for questions and listening in, so you can pass it on to Mr. Baker.
Great, thank you. We will return to Santa Maria with Dave Baker. Dave?
Good morning. My name is Dave Baker, and today I'm representing the Lompoc Trails Committee. We are a group of dedicated volunteers within the community of Lompoc that are trying to do good things for, to help with recreation in Lompoc. In 2015, the group of volunteers built a community free-to-ride, public-access bicycle park, and at that time, we dedicated that park to a local businessperson and that just passed away. After that dedication, their family gifted 82 acres of land to our foundation, our nonprofit foundation, in an effort to provide recreational experiences in Lompoc. So in 2019, we rallied a focus group together for dedicated volunteers, and we started down the process of how to build public trails on private lands. That's taken us down a very long road, multiple roads during that time. Supervisor Nelson was in charge of District 3, and now it's Supervisor Hartman. And we are excited to be at this process here of going for approval so that we could build public hiking trails and biking trails for the community of Lompoc. It's been a long, long journey, as I mentioned. Lots of people that think through this journey are recognized with the Parks Department with Ryan, Dom, and Jeff Lindgren. Planning has been very helpful with Jeff Wilson, and again, Director Lindgren's been very helpful. And then through the most recent process with city staff, with James Cleary, and I'm sure I'm missing a few, but we have gone a long, long time. Again, we started this in 2019, and we're excited to be able to provide something to the community of Lompoc. So I'd like to thank, again, Supervisor Nelson for starting this quite a while ago and supporting us the whole time, and most recently, thank you Supervisor Hartman for investing in the community of Lompoc. Our property surrounds an existing hiking trail of Bodger Trail, which is frequented about 100 people a day on that trail, and to provide parking for them will help with the community. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have, if I can. I understand public comment, but if nothing else, thank you, all of you, for this opportunity, and we're looking forward to doing good things in Lompoc.
Great. Supervisor Hartman?
I would just like to add...
Your mic. There you go. Thank you.
I would just like to add thank you to all the county departments, and especially thank you to you, Dave Baker. It isn't easy keeping an all-volunteer organization motivated and energized when things get extended over such a long period, and the main focus is making this trail come to life. So you've done it. I've seen you raising money. I've seen you at the fair, at the market, Saturday market, Friday night markets, and you've really, really invested your heart and soul in this project. So I can't wait now, you can finally get to work, to see the people who, it's people from all walks of life, all ages, who this 82 acres is bisected by, oddly enough, a county road or a county park trail that continued to wash out and so wasn't available. And so now this will be a whole network of trails with a parking area, and it just, it means so much to this community. I fully didn't understand until I went out there and saw, and you go up a hill and then you are rewarded by a lookout over the entire Lompoc Valley. So it's an extraordinary place, and thank you for all your hard work on it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Capps. I just also wanted to thank you, Dave, and yours is perseverance. I know when I met with you guys six years ago, I was concerned that it might take a while to get through this process, and I really, I'm just going to commend you and all your volunteers on just sticking with it. I wish these processes didn't take so long. I know our board is committed to trying to shortcut some of those things in the future, but again, you know, without your guys' persistence and love for the Lompoc Valley and Lompoc community, this wouldn't be happening, so I just wanted to make sure I extended my gratitude to you as well.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Capps. I just also wanted to thank you, Dave, and yours is perseverance. I know when I met with you guys six years ago, I was concerned that it might take a while to get through this process, and I really, I'm just going to commend you and all your volunteers on just sticking with it. I wish these processes didn't take so long. I know our board is committed to trying to shortcut some of those things in the future, but again, you know, without your guys' persistence and love for the Lompoc Valley and Lompoc community, this wouldn't be happening, so I just wanted to make sure I extended my gratitude to you as well.
Okay. Thank you. I will move staff recommendation?
I'd be happy to second that one.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, when we're ready, we will move on to A33. Don't worry, we're good.
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number 33 is sponsored by Supervisor Capps. It is to consider recommendations regarding the contribution of $5,000 to the Food Bank of Santa Barbara County.
Just a quick acknowledgement, just was able to move some of the funds that we have from our 990 funds from my office to the food bank, as we all have been sorely aware of with the government shutdown and the pause of SNAP benefits for so many of our residents here in Santa Barbara County. Our food banks have felt extreme pressure, and so our office wanted to step up and do what we can, particularly given the holiday season and the cold. Our food banks really bear the brunt of some dysfunction in Washington and what's happening. So food is not a partisan issue, as we all know, and this board has been so supportive of so much of our safety net here in Santa Barbara County, and I'm so proud of the way in which our, our community really steps up for all of those in need, particularly now. So this is, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. A36, our last one. Supervisor Lee? After it gets announced.
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number 36 was previously read into the record, as it was our addendum for today's meeting, but it is from the County Executive Office, and is to consider recommendations regarding the appointment of the Fire Chief.
Good. I wanted to give this opportunity to Fire Chief Garrett Huff for him to make a comment.
Yeah, thank you for that. My, my heart rate just went up significantly. Chair Capps, members of the board, CEO, Miosato, I want to thank you very much for this opportunity. This is the biggest honor to be selected as the Fire Chief for Santa Barbara County Fire Department. This is the greatest privilege so far in my career. Having grown up in this department and serving alongside the men and women of the people that serve our community, this moment is very meaningful and impactful to me. I am grateful for the trust and confidence that you all have in me, and I understand the responsibility that is now on my shoulders. This coming year marks our 100th anniversary, a century of providing service to this county. I look forward to reflecting on our past but creating a clear vision for our future. Again, I want to thank you for this honor. I am committed to leading with integrity, transparency, and just dedication to serve this community, so thank you very much.
I just want to follow up, saying I'm very excited for you to be in this role. You do have my full confidence and trust, so I'm looking forward to what your tenure here is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Supervisor Lavignino?
Yeah. I just want to thank you first off for making it real easy for us to make this decision and, and for the CEO to make this decision. And number two, I want people to understand that what your history is inside of our department, so if you could just take 30 seconds, I think it's important for people to know who you are and what you've done.
Sure, 30 seconds.
I'll give you a minute.
I've been with the County Fire Department for 20 years. I started as a, I lateraled here as a firefighter paramedic. I served on our helicopter for a little period as a flight paramedic, engineer-inspector, paramedic FTO, fire captain, training captain, battalion chief. I served in our Prevention Bureau and was the deputy, deputy fire marshal. Then I was promoted to division chief of EMS and training, so I got both of my passions, training in EMS, was a big part of the ambulance transport initiative, promoted to deputy chief, and inherited the RFCC that was kind of already started but very much still in its infancy. Took that across the finish line, and here I am today. So that's me in 30 seconds.
That's awesome. I think, you know, in this county, in this county, people are, you know, this is a position that is very high-profile, and so I just wanted them to know that you know Santa Barbara County inside out and backwards. You've been in this department for 20 years, and I think we all have full confidence that you're going to lead us into the next 20, so thanks, Garrett.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, are you chief yet?
Not yet. Not yet.
Soon to be chief, okay, yeah.
Chief-elect.
I just wanted to clarify three things. One is Garrett is not chief yet. You can only have one chief at a time, so I just want to remind everyone that his first day is December 8th. I also want to just let the public know, we had a nationwide search for this job, obviously. Garrett's going to do wonderfully for us, but I just want to let the, let the public know it wasn't a shoo-in and that he actually went through a competitive process with the nationwide search. And lastly, there will be time, we'll bring a resolution thanking our existing chief, but I just want to say thank you to Mark Hartwig. You know, he had a career spanning 33 years. He was a fire chief in two places before he came here, and he's been a dedicated, bold leader, and we thank him for his service, and there will be more time for us to thank him publicly and formally. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, and I just want to add my excitement, just one, one point is how beloved and how excited your, your fellow firefighters are. We just heard it from so many people, so many places, and that makes me personally really excited for you to take over. Congratulations.
That makes me personally very excited.
Yeah. Good. Okay, congratulations, Garrett.
So I move staff recommendation.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations. Okay. That wraps up our, oh, no, I'm sorry, we've had some late requests. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Chair Capps and members of the board. We did have a couple requests to speak on... We did have a couple requests to speak on Administrative Item Number Five as well as Administrative Item Number 23, so if we can return to those. I will begin with Administrative Item Number Five. That was previously read into the record. This is from the Behavioral Wellness Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding a services agreement with a Camp Recovery Center LLC for alcohol and drug program substance use disorder services for fiscal years 2025 through 2027.
I just want to make sure, members of the public, that might have pulled this, if, that they're actually speaking to this item. If there is public comment on non-agendized items, that they can, you can speak about any, any topic under the sun, but are you, are they speaking to this item?
And this is for Gail Oshirinko on Zoom.
And she is, yes.
And so we are going to Zoom with Gail Oshirinko. Gail?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Gail. Please proceed.
I actually talked to the clerk's office and said it was okay. I didn't need to speak, you covered it, but I did raise this item with a couple of the board members and I appreciate the attention. I talked to Melissa Wilkins. What disturbed me was when I went to Yelp to look at reviews of this place. There was one that was quite disturbing, but also quite credible, and I wanted to be sure that the department was aware, had a process so that any client we sent, a couple of counties away, had a way of reaching the department and letting us know if there was a problem. If, you know, they, these facilities are often understaffed and so problems can arise. They're difficult facilities to run. It's difficult to keep drugs out of them. And I just wanted to know that the department looks at Yelp and looks at any reviews they can find and does, does their homework. I think they did. I'm expecting it to be a good experience and I appreciate that Laura had pulled this earlier. I had trouble getting connected fast enough earlier, that's why my name was still on there, but thank you for the opportunity to speak.
And that concludes our request to speak on Administrative Item Number Five. And now we will return to Administrative Item Number 13, or 23, my apologies. Administrative Item Number 23 is from the General Services Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding a professional service agreement for Orchid Library Environmental Services, Project Number PRJ 233 20056, Orchid Library Facilities. This is in the 4th District and requires a 4/5 vote and was previously approved with a balance of the administrative agenda, but we did have one request to speak here in Santa Maria, Todd Wilson. Todd?
Do I have a timer somewhere?
Yes, it's three minutes.
Yeah. My name is Todd Wilson. This agenda item is a funding request for a supplemental EIR for the library proposed in Orchid. The site of this project is a South Pointe Estate subdivision parcel. Originally, when that subdivision was approved, it was dedicated as open space for the planned residential development. There were restrictions, indeed restrictions, on the property to maintain it as open space property. And I reviewed, I reviewed the attachments and I want to bring to your attention. On attachment A, there's a depiction of the traffic corner of Foxenwood and Clark Road. It reflects left-hand turn lanes. That was shut down five years ago. This attachment is misinforming you and I don't know who else who has relied on this information. Additionally, the entryway, which was a problem, including the traffic at Foxenwood, at the Foxenwood Corner, in the EIR that this is going to supplement, and lot of discussion on the issues. The entryway is misrepresented. If you took and drove that entryway, you would run into parked cars for the project what's shown as the LeBard project. Additionally, there is no secondary access shown. There is an easement that's reflected on this map as a utility easement. It's not. We resolved that in the Oasis project. It's an access easement that actually runs right across the parking lot and right next to the building for Oasis. The package indicated that there was to be a community center. Supervisors, a community center is not an approved, it's not an approved site. It's not allowed in your land use development code. Oasis project just blew through it. Planners and applicant just changed the name to a meeting center. So now it's a community center? It's against the code. I don't know what you were doing the first time with Oasis and so the presentation here is, let's do it again. It doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Todd. That is your time.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our administrative agenda. Is that correct?
Chair Capps and members of the board, that is correct.
Okay. So then we can move on to general public comment.
Chair Capps and members of the board, we have 13 requests to speak in general public And we will begin on Zoom with Lawanda Lyons-Purit, to be followed by Rennie Strong. Lawanda?
Good morning, Chair Capps, members of the board. Mashing windows, smashing cars, flashbulb, no ID, no badges, wearing fake ones. That is lawlessness, lawlessness. We have a constitution. We have laws. There is a thing called due process, due process, which is guaranteed on the Constitution. We have police. Every resident, every citizen, everyone in Santa Barbara County, any city, anywhere in the United States should be appalled at what is happening with immigration, what is happening with ICE, what is happening with Border Patrol, and what is happening, particularly in Santa Barbara County. There's that old saying that says justice will not be served until those who are unaffected as, as, or as outraged as those who are. I am totally outraged. There was another incident in Santa Maria where a family was trying to go to the grocery store on Sunday. There is no reason you're going to smash up their car, break their windows. There has to be another way and there is a thing called due process. Board members, I urge you to condemn excessive force during immigration enforcement, fund humanitarian and legal support for impacted families. Thank you. Be outraged. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a note that I'm closing public comment at this point.
We will now go to Rennie Strong and then we will return to Santa Maria, or my apologies, we'll go to Rennie Strong, then we will go to Miriam Shaw. Rennie?
Good afternoon, good morning to everybody. This is Rennie Strong. So let's see, where do we start off with? Thank you for the lady that just spoke. Absolutely, we should be extremely outraged and not just outraged, but we need to take some serious intention action and quit giving our power away. To what I'm going to go into next, I don't think a lot of people know what kind of system we have here. They don't know we've been bamboozled, hoodwinked, fooled in many ways. And this is the time, the great unveiling. The veil is lifted. We're seeing that this government that is running it is, is a fascist government. There's proof of this. There's documentaries about it. There's, it's, it's in all the courtrooms, it's in all between the judges, like their back room or their, if you, if you look, know what to look for, you will find it. I'm going to, there's a, there's a great, I know I only have a short amount of time. So what people don't know is they need to look up corbettreport.com, James Corbett of the corbettreport.com, C-O-R-B-E-T-T-R-E-P-O-R-T.com. He's got everything about that. Here, we'll start with this, the top of our leaders. It's called pathocracy, pathocracy. Okay? They, this is all, here's, if you look up that under his search bar, if you look up descent into madness, let's see, escape the madhouse about these, these so-called leaders that we have. Does psychopathic, sociopathic come to mind? Now, I'll tell you, we have the best here where we live, just because of the environment that we're in and how beautiful it is here. But don't, don't take this lightly. I don't mean the, it's like a laugh to cry thing. It's so sad and it's pathetic. They're not on your side, they're not your friends, they're not looking out for your best interest, those that are sitting up there and nowhere else. We're lucky we have the assistance we have because we have caring people, human beings that care enough. So thank you to everybody that's speaking for. The other thing, last thing, and again, look up corbettreport.com, go get, go get caught up. They want to put people in the mental hospitals that are speaking the truth on these things. The COVID-1984 agenda, that's called the Great Reset. World Economic Forum pushed, the fourth industrial evolution. They also, about 9/11, it was an inside job. If we, if we keep standing on the fence like Humpty Dumpty and quit deciding and we hope to have a hope in God.
Thank you, Rennie. That's your time.
Thank you, Rennie. That is your time.
No G.
We will now go to Miriam Shaw, then we will return here in Santa Maria with Sue Hightman. Miriam? Miriam, we have unmuted you on our end. If you can please unmute on your end to provide your comments.
Oh, there we go. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Capps and supervisors. My name is Miriam Shaw. I'm the Director of Public Affairs, speaking on behalf of the Planned Parenthood Central Coast Action Fund. At PPCCAF, we fight for our patients' health and wellness at every level and we serve all patients that come through our doors regardless of their immigration status. Part of protecting our patients' health and wellness is keeping them safe from the excessive force used by ICE agents with no accountability or regard for safety. While community organizations like 805 UndocuFund and brave volunteers are doing everything they can, they cannot continue protecting our undocumented community without local government support and funding. The federal government has declared war on a very important part of our community and we are the only lifeline they have. While volunteers can be smoke-bombed and ignored, your voices matter when it comes to demanding accountability from ICE. None of us can do it alone. Collective action is our only hope and we need you on the community's side. Thank you.
We will now return to Santa Maria with Sue Hightman, to be followed by Naomi Li. Sue?
Thank you, supervisors. I'm going to approach this a little bit differently. My husband and I are retired farmers. We live in Orchid. We farmed pomegranates, almonds, and olives for olive oil, and we were the first olive oil with the help of Sonoma Olive Press to win the international competition for Best in Class for all of California, and that was in 2014. We couldn't have done it without our immigrant migrant farm workers, or as we call them, our valued employees. So I want to say as a retired farmer, we understand the value of our labor force, especially our farm workers. Our crops here in Santa Barbara County, our crops that I grew are handpicked, they're not mechanized like my ancestors in the Midwest who dealt with wheat and corn and soybeans. It's not mechanized. We need our labor force and especially need that labor force for the economic stability of our small and medium-sized farms. So everything was wonderful. I loved being here in the strawberry capital. And now we're compromised, we're compromised on our farms by these ICE raids. The lack of due process and the force of attacks on our farm workers are forcing the backbone of our economy, which is farming, to sink to a different level. We are proud to be California farmers. We are proud to be the breadbasket, not the Midwest, of farming and we depend on our farm workers. This is not about criminal activity when ICE enters our farms. This is about attacks on people of color and attacks on our California economy, which is farming. So most of you champion immigration rights, so I'm not putting down any of the supervisors. I want to say instead, this is really dire times for us and it's dire times for our farms too. And I want to say that my ask to you is very simple. Each of you have communities that you talk to, please talk about how important this is that we deal with ICE. You have political agendas that should always include supporting our farm workers and ICE raids, stopping ICE raids. I look especially to Supervisor Nelson, my supervisor, who's a member of RCRC, and they should definitely stand up as you, as an officer of that organization. So when I started here with Indivisible, this organization was a small handful of people. In Santa Maria alone, we turned out close to 2,000 people for no kings. There are five other indivibles just in Santa Barbara County, so you add that together and we're a strong force. So we ask that you support our 70% Hispanic population here in Santa Maria with their concrete ask of what they need from you. And thank you very much for your support in the past and go California farmers. Thank you.
We will now go.
Yeah, just a kind reminder that we don't clap, we do this. Thank you.
We will now go to Naomi Li, to be followed by Mark Campbell. Naomi?
Thank you, board of supervisors, for allowing me to speak. My name is Naomi Li and I am a retired school teacher from Orchid, co-chair of Indivisible Santa Maria, and volunteer for Rapid Response. As a third-generation Japanese-American, I am horrified at the reinstatement of the Alien Enemies Act that is illegal and discriminates against immigrants based on their ancestry. This brought about 120,000 people of Japanese descent to be relocated away from friends, families, and their hard-earned property. History is repeating itself, as I saw firsthand as an 805 volunteer on November 13th on Telephone Road. Many people there were community members, such as teachers, professors, business owners, as well as activists. We were all concerned how something so un-American can be happening in our own backyard. None of the ICE or Homeland Security acknowledged our questions and provided no information about warrants, badge numbers, their names, or intent. Many of us had tears in our eyes as we watched those being detained, were driven away. Their spouses, children, and everyone that they loved will wonder spouses, children, and everyone that they loved, will wonder why they did not come home that night, or the next, or the next. For those families, the unknown must be the hardest burden to bear. This is unacceptable, and we demand clarity. We must, as a caring community, at the very least, provide humanitarian and legal support for, by allocation of funds to all who are involved in this undemocratic and hideous process. Thank you again for your time.
We will now go to Mark Campbell to be followed by Teresa Suarez. Mark?
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. My name is Mark Campbell. I'm a retired school teacher at Orchid Schools for almost 30 years with, uh, Santa Maria Indivisible, also associated with, uh, um, 805 UndocuFund. Um, this is not what I pictured I'd be doing on my retirement, is speaking at, uh, board meetings, but, uh, here I am. I will always worry about my children and their families, and I will always be concerned for the health of my community. We are in this situation today because of the last few decades, our federal government has failed to come up with a bipartisan immigration policy. And now that failure is being put on the backs of average, hard-working men and women whose only crime has been to seek a better, safer life for themselves and their families, a crime, by the way, that is classified as a misdemeanor. And as such, it carries the right of due process as any American, as any person on American soil under the Constitution. And why has there been this failure of policymaking? Because it has been more advantageous politically to maintain a level of fear and resentment toward a group of people, whether they are documented or undocumented. Too many Americans have never sat down to dinner with people of different culture background than their own. They haven't gone to church with them, or mingled with other families at festivals, social events. They haven't taken the opportunities to learn that there are way more similarities between cultures than there are differences. The struggles and the joys we experience are processed in the same ways. Unfortunately, some have focused on our differences to create distrust and worse in order to make themselves more powerful. It is not to their advantage to seek compromise and work for a solution. On the contrary, they profit from the suffering of others. So we are left in this moment with a policy vacuum that has opened the door for the cruel, inhumane, and unconstitutional actions that we are witnessing daily in our community. People are afraid. My friends and neighbors and their families are being abused or ignored. We look to our county leaders to be our voice, to work together to find solutions, and to support the values of all decent members of our community. I am confident that you will support the efforts of organizations that are trying to help families that have had loved ones disappeared. Families shouldn't be afraid to take their children to school, or to shop in stores like everyone else, or to use the food banks if needed. There are lots of people and groups whose first job it is to help others. Those are the ones I want to see supported by our county officials. Thank you for your work.
We will now go to Teresa Suarez to be followed by Gabriel Mendoza. Teresa?
Good morning, Chair Caps and Supervisors. My name is Teresa Suarez, and I'm a youth coordinator for the Take Your Youth Program with MICUP in Santa Maria. I write today to urge you, um, to urge the Board to condemn excessive force during immigration enforcement and fund humanitarian and legal support for impacted families. On November 13th, we witnessed numerous ICE and HSI agents conducting operations on East Valley Farms in Santa Maria, where many families were arrested. We hope these families receive the support they need and are properly compensated. It was not surprising to see ICE agents covering their faces or to see members of the LA media taking photos of us while ICE agents refused to identify themselves. These agents even attempted to intimidate community members by raising their batons and approaching as if to strike. They used multiple fear tactics, pushing our cameras, pushing us as people. Our cameras were the only safety devices that we carried at that moment. Agents drove their vehicles in and out of the entrance without any obstructions. So there was no justification for this use of flashbangs to move us aside or to create a false impression that we were blocking their exit. This evidence, not only, these devices not only harmed our ears, but also instilled fear in the community, highlighting the complete lack of support from our, um, for our safety during these moments, um, like this. Throughout the entire operations, we only documented what was happening, yet agents used military-style tactics against our community as we were a threat. As many ICE vehicles exited, agents pointed their guns from the top of their vehicles. All of this was documented by community members and by me as evidence. This is unacceptable. Therefore, we ask for county to take leadership in ensuring safety, transparency, and funding supports. I would also like to, I know you guys mentioned that you guys probably don't talk about this. I don't know why you guys are not allowed to, but I think it's an important issue that, I mean, we're there, we're experiencing all of this. I really hope that you all really do talk about it and think about the fam, the children's, the families, because they're also exposed to this. It's not just adults. Children's are really being affected on it. This is our reality. Thank you.
Oh yeah, just to, just to clarify, we, uh, we certainly talk about this very, very serious tragic topic a lot in this board hearing and, and in our jobs all the time. Just in this format of this hearing, it's not a gen, it's not agendized. Uh, it's, so it's not a topic that we can talk about and, and get in a back and forth with the public because it's not been listed on the agenda for, for the rest of the community to know that we're gonna have a, a conversation about this. So the rest of the public didn't, wouldn't know that we're gonna have a conversation about ICE and immigration today.
Would you talk about the meetings we did have?
Yeah, we've had multiple meetings. We have annual meetings with the sheriff, the Truth Act. We have had, uh, so many hearings on this very topic where it's put out in advance to the community. This is when we're talking about it, there's agenda, we have, uh, uh, where it's structured. So, so I just don't want to give the impression that we certainly don't care, or we don't ask questions, or we don't have hearings. We, we've had many, 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 and we will continue to.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
No, I really appreciate, really appreciate it.
We will now go to Gabriel Mendoza to be followed by Sergio Castillo. Gabriel?
Good morning, Chair Caps and Supervisors. My name is Gabriel Mendoza. I'm a health navigator with MICUP in Santa Maria. I'm here to, today to urge the Board to contain and destitute force during immigration enforcement, fund humanitarian and legal support for impacted families, and stop transfer of medical recipients and layoffs, and establish a health access task, task force. In Santa Maria, there's a big indigenous farmworkers, uh, undocumented families already facing major obstacles to staying safe and healthy. In my role as a MICUP, I see how harmful enforcement taxes create fear and trauma, how families feel betrayed when they learn about healthcare changes from the news instead of trusted, trusted partners. This disruption shake in our households, children, elders, and disabled residents. A health access task force is essential so our community, so they can understand, so community organizations, unions, health leaders, and advocates can be part of the decisions that directly affect the people we serve. Our community reserve transparency, stability, and real collaboration. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
We will now go to Sergio Castillo to be followed by Danny Mog. Sergio?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sergio Castillo, and I am community organizer at MICUP and a member of A-05 Immigrant Coalition. I'm here today to express my deep concern regarding recent operations that have put the safety and well-being of, of our communities at risk. I urge the Board to condemn the excessive use of force during the enforcement of immigration laws, to fund humanitarian and legal assistance for affected families, and to prevent access to medical care by stopping transfer and justify decimal. I am deeply concerned that in our own county, stun grenades and aggressive tactics were used without prior notice, putting people at risk. During this operation, during this operation, organizer, volunteer, student, and even staff member from A-05 UndocuFund were supposed to flashbang and push, despite posing a threat. This is unacceptable. The impacts on our community are profound. Families losing income, living in constant fear, and being forced to relocate abruptly. Meanwhile, nonprofit organizations are doing their best to respond, shouldering an unsuitable emotional and financial burden alone. Our community needs protection, clarity, and humanity. Thank you.
We will now go to Danny Mog to be followed by Shawna Stillwell. Danny?
Good morning, Chair Cap and Supervisors. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Danny Mog. I am a resident of San, Santa Barbara County, District Four, and a retired engineer. Uh, Mr. Nelson, I happen to be one of your constituents. And I am here today to lodge a complaint and to remind you of your solemn responsibility to this community. Sir, your recent votes make clear your strong support of these illegal actions, and I can assure you, at some point, you're gonna face the voters in Santa Barbara County, and your, your votes, your voting record will not be forgotten. I'm sure you're all aware of the assault on our community on November 14th, just four days ago, when federal agents abducted at least 15 members of this community, including one infant unlawfully. And I don't say that lightly. The Fifth Amendment to the United States Constitution strictly prohibits the arrest of any person regardless of immigration status without due process. And I want to be clear, if they can do that to anyone, documented or not, they can do it to anybody in this room. So, what the federal government has done here in our peaceful agricultural community is in direct violation of the United States Constitution, and I ask you today, what will be your response? I'm a veteran of the United States military, and when I voluntarily enlisted on April 7th, 1977, and showed up at the recruitment facility in Los Angeles, California, I swore an oath to that Constitution. It's an oath that all public servants pledge. I ask each one of you, can you honestly say that you're honoring that oath? Are you meeting your mission? And I want to be clear, this is not the paramount issue here today. I stand before you to shine a light on the absolute inhumanity of these actions. What the federal government has done is to rendition, uh, members of this community, snatch them from their workplace, disappear them from their loved ones, vital members of this community who give their sweat and blood to feed this city and this nation. In an act of utter cruelty, they deliver these people to places that have, they have absolutely no connection to. These illegal actions have removed fathers and mothers, sisters and brothers from their families, left children without parents. How in God's name can anyone who represents this community condone this? It is far past time for all of you folks to live up to your responsibility as a servant to this community and look yourselves in the mirror and ask yourselves if you're doing everything that you can to protect all residents of Santa Barbara County regardless of immigration status.
Thank you, Danny, that is your time.
Thank you.
We will now go to Shawna Stillwell to be followed by Caesar Vasquez. Shawna?
Good morning, Chairwoman Caps, Vice Chair Nelson, and fellow board members. My name is Shawna Stillwell, and I've lived in Orchid since 1980, since I was four years old. I grew up here, and because I grew up here, I need you to understand something very clearly. What happened at Glass House Farms in Carpinteria, and again last week on Cambridge Way in Orchid, is not an isolated incident. It is part of a cultural pattern I have watched my entire life in this county. When I was a child in the eighties, I saw Santa Barbara County Sheriff's deputies abuse their power again and again. I was in the car with my Brown friends in Orchid when they were targeted, pulled over, and forced face down on the sidewalk at gunpoint on Bradley and Patterson. They were humiliated, treated like criminals, and not one citation was issued because they had done nothing wrong except be Brown in Orchid, where the white folks live. I will never forget the deputy looking at me, the privileged white girl in the backseat, and saying, "You're not the problem." Little did they know. That memory has never left me. What terrifies me, Supervisor Nelson, is that the same racialized violence and dehumanization I was witness to as a child is still happening in 2025, in your district. Flashbangs, tear gas, students and youth organizers shoved to the ground, no warning, no transparency, no accountability, families who are already afraid and are now being hunted like human war targets because of the wishes of a billionaire authoritarian, small-fingered vulgarian operating like a fascist terrorist in our neighborhoods. And while this is happening, 805 UndocuFund is doing the work the county refuses to do, providing over $137,000 in emergency support to more than 120 families with zero county funding. We are asking you humbly, clearly, and directly, condemn the excessive force being employed by ICE, condemn Sheriff Bill Brown's refusal to follow California laws, and demand he quit collaborating with ICE. We have video of ICE admitting they are collaborating with Sheriff Bill Brown. This is not hyperbole, this is not putting public polit, public safety first.
Thank you, Shawna, that is your time.
This is complacency with fascism.
We will now go to Caesar Vasquez to be followed by Armando Santiago. Caesar?
Before I start my comment today, I do want to let you all know that four people were just taken in Santa Barbara County by ICE as this meeting happens. Good morning, members of the Board, representatives of the people. Mi nombre es Cesar Vasquez. I'm 17 years old. I'm the rapid response organizer for A-05 UndocuFund. Since the day I graduated, I've been patrolling the communities you represent. I've been feeding the families, delivering resources to the families, and I've had to witness four different kidnappings by the ICE agents that come out of their Santa Maria office. I was there on the 13th, where I got flashbanged and shoved by ICE agents. On that day, ICE agents took a baby and a pregnant mother, but refused to report on that because they knew it wouldn't fit their narrative. They also took 10 other individuals that they failed to report about. People are being taken on a daily basis, hundreds of families have been separated and scared, most of which aren't criminals. I actually want to share the exact numbers of how of how many families have been taken so that no one in this room can say that they never knew. As of yesterday, over one thousand nine, one thousand and nine people have been taken by ICE in Santa Barbara, Ventura, and Slow County. Fifty-nine have been taken, well, as of today, now sixty-three members have been taken in Santa Barbara County. In the month of November, two hundred ninety-nine have been taken across Santa Barbara County, one hundred and seventy-seven in Santa Maria, fifty-nine, well, as of today, sixty, have been taken from Santa Barbara City, one in Solving, six in Golita, one in San Ynez, twenty-seven in Carpinteria, and twenty-six individuals from Lompoc. And this is a minimum that we know about. Now, I know that you do not have the power to stop what's happening, but I do want you to remind, I do want to remind you all what you do have the power to do. You have the ability to hold Sheriff Bill Brown accountable for his bland and obvious, and obvious collaboration with ICE that ICE has confirmed to me and a New York Times reporter. You have the ability to call for the accountability of local rogue law enforcement agents providing information to ICE, which has been verified by multiple agencies that work for your county. You have the ability to direct funds to the, to support the families dealing with the loved one taken. You have the ability to come out with us, patrol the community you serve, and witness just for a day what our community deals with on a daily basis. But most importantly, you have a voice. You have a platform across the communities you represent. Joan Hartman follows me on Instagram. She can repost the videos about the families being taken. You have the ability to speak about the violence that has flooded our community, and you still have the freedom to denounce the actions of ICE. The only thing stopping you is your moral obligation. Thank you.
We will now go to Armando Santiago to be followed by Ronaldo Rodriguez, who is our final speaker. Armando?
Hola, buenos dias, Supervisor Capps and Supervisors. Mi nombre es Armando Santiago. Soy organizador comunitario con el proyecto Misteco Indígena y también soy miembro de la coalición de migración ocho cero cinco aquí en Santa María.
Good morning, Supervisor Capps and Supervisors. My name is Armando Santiago, and I'm an organizer, community organizer with the Salado of Death Program on MyCap in the city of Santa Maria, a member of the EROFI Immigration Coalition.
Estoy aquí para solicitar respetuosamente su apoyo y solidaridad con nuestra comunidad migrante ante tantos abusos y deportaciones por parte de ICE. Durante mucho tiempo nuestra comunidad ha sido atacada, violentada por nuestro color de piel, nuestra lengua materna. Hoy en día nuestra comunidad está siendo separada de sus familias y esto es injusto.
I'm here respectfully request your support, your support and solidarity with our migrant community in the face of so many abuses and deportation by ICE. For a long time, our community has been attacked and violated by our skin of color and our mother, in our mother language. Today, our community is being separated from their families, and this is unfair.
Mi vecino salía a trabajar en los campos agrícolas aquí en Santa María. Él tiene tres hijos menores de edad y su esposa. Él trabajaba para sacar adelante el sustento, pagando los pagos y los gastos requeridos por este país. Un día simplemente no regresó porque ICE lo detuvo y lo deportó. Él no tenía orden de al resto. Él no tenía algún crimen. Su único crimen es ser de color y hablar español. ¿Y ahora qué pasa con esta familia y el trauma que ellos tendrán?
My neighbors used to work in the agriculture fields here in Santa Maria. He has three children and his wife. He worked to give, he paid all the expenses required in this country. And one day, he simply did not return because ICE stopped him and deported him. He didn't have any arrest warrants. He didn't have any crime. He only crimes to be a color, a person of color, and speak Spanish. And now what happens with this family, and now what happens with this family and the trauma they will have?
Por eso es importante tomar acciones que cuiden y protejan a nuestra misma gente y a nuestra comunidad porque lo único que hacen es luchar para salir, salir adelante.
Therefore, it is important to take action that take care of and protect our own people in our community. And that, and that, and then to, and then to fight to get ahead.
Gracias y esperamos poder contar con su apoyo y recordando que estamos en un país libre soberano y que luchamos por los, por la igualdad.
Thank you. We look forward for your support. And remember, we live in a sovereign nation. Thank you.
Gracias.
We will now go to Ronaldo Rodriguez, who is our final speaker on this item, or general public comment. I apologize.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Renaldo Rodriguez, organizador comunitario con mi COAT aquí en Santa María. Estoy aquí, supervisor, para pedir su intervención y apoyo de solidaridad para nuestra comunidad agrícola residente aquí en Santa María. Nuevamente, nuestra comunidad ha sido objeto de ataque por parte de ICE con detención desarbitraria.
Good morning, Cap Supervisor and Supervisors. My name is Renaldo Rodriguez, community organizer with MyCap here in Santa María. I'm here to ask for your intervention and solidarity with support of our resident agriculture community in Santa María. Again, our community have been attacked by ICE without arbitrary arrest.
Me atrevo a decirle que muchos condados ya han dado su posicionamiento respecto al secuestro que está haciendo los de ICE. Y aquí sentimos que no tenemos el apoyo de nuestras autoridades.
I tell you that many counties have been already given their position regarding their kidnapping that those of ICE have been doing. And here, we feel that we don't have the support of our authorities.
Hoy estoy aquí para pedirles que nos unamos todos a esta exigencia para que haya justicia para todos.
Today, I'm here to ask you to join this demand so that there is justice for all.
Nuestra comunidad agrícola, su único delito es trabajar duro todos los días sin importar las condiciones del tiempo. Ellos también son la base de la economía de esta ciudad y del país con sus impuestos.
Our farm workers' only crime is to work hard every day regardless of the weather conditions. There are, there are also the basis of the economy of this city, Santa María, and the county with their taxes.
Todos los seres humanos merecen ser tratados con dignidad y un debido proceso legal y no, y no como criminal por el simple hecho de color racial.
Our humans beings deserve to be treated with dignity and to pro, and to a process of law and not as a criminals as today. They try to catalog us or everyone with a simple racial, racial color.
Pido a que nos unamos todos a pedir un alto al secuestro porque hoy los de ICE, eso es lo que están haciendo. No, no más separación de familia. Gracias por el espacio y los animo a estar al lado correcto de la justicia.
I ask that we all join to, to ask for end of the kidnapping because today, those of ICE, that's what they do kidnapping. No more family separation. Thank you for your space, for the space. And we encourage you to be on the right side of justice. Thank you.
And Chair Capps, members of the board, my apologies. There were two additional speakers that were missed previously before public comment was closed at ten oh eight. We are going to go to Primitiva Hernandez to be followed by Rochelle, who will be our final speaker. Primitiva?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Chair, and everyone else here. I want to take this time to thank the many volunteers who took their time to show up in solidarity with us as they are the ones that are firsthand witnessing the horror and terror that we're speaking of. And as you heard, we have their teachers, veterans, everyone is being impacted. And they are firsthand witnessing what we have been living for three years. So thank you for your service. This may not be military service or other type of service, but it is a service that the undocumented community very much appreciates. Thank you. And I also want to take this opportunity just to let you know that we are doing a very difficult work at this time. And yes, with no support from any of the three counties that we serve, despite we, we have been able to raise over half a million dollars, that money has been distributed to the community. The only two cities right now that have contributed towards our emergency assistance fund have been the city of Santa Barbara, very generously allocating half a million dollars, of which we received a hundred thousand. City of Golita, which allocated a hundred thousand, and we received forty-five. City of Carpinteria, I believe they allocated ten thousand and are in conversation of looking at their, their budgets. Aside from that, a hundred percent of our funding, a hundred percent of the humanitarian aid that we're distributing is individual donations, grants, foundations. We are a hundred percent funded by philanthropy. So we've been coming to different meetings with, to different cities, asking time and time again that we need support. We haven't done it in the past. Eight oh five UndocuFund has historically been funded by philanthropy, but this, this time requires that we all come together. So let's agendize this item. Let's discuss how we can have protections for the community. Let's talk about the things that you are able to do. We have groups on the ground that have been volunteering their time, their limited resources to support this community that is being so unjustly targeted. And you, you may have read the report from HSI on the operation on November thirteen, but there's a lot of information that is missing there. ICE has been found to lie, to lie to authorities, to lie to the public. So you, you need to receive the full picture of what happened. Cesar shared some information about people that were taken and were not mentioned in that report. They said it was a human trafficking. Are those people that they took being afforded human trafficking rights? I can tell you that they're not because it's the same thing that happened at Glass House Farms with all those minors. They were never treated as human trafficking victims. Thank you.
We will now go to Rochelle, who is our final speaker on general public comment. Rochelle?
Hello. Good morning, Chair Cap and Supervisors. My name is Rochelle Carr, and I am a nurse. And I met you, Supervisor Bob Nelson, a few months back in the spring at Lompoc Valley Medical Center when you came to visit and talk about the impact of the big, beautiful bill. Since then, I have quit my hospital job and learned to speak Spanish so I can work with my community of Santa Maria where I live. I also have started volunteering with eight oh five UndocuFund, and I have borne witness to ICE's unwarranted brutality committed against members of our community. After what happened last Thursday at East Valley Farms and Sunday at Stowel Plaza, we are experiencing PTSD. And we are, we were even on the way driving to a volunteer dinner gathering Sunday night, and we felt our hearts drop into our stomachs when we saw a car speeding behind us because we were actually scared that it might be ICE about to hit us. And so I can only imagine the terror that undocumented community members feel. As a nurse, I have the conscience that drives me to make sure I have done everything I can to make sure my patients are okay. I hope that you will feel called to exhibit the same level of accountability and show support for all our residents of Santa Barbara County. We need more funding to our volunteer organizations, such as eight oh five UndocuFund, and for legal defense of our immigrant community. And note that many of us who had never even voted before, we are now paying attention, and your decisions will determine our voting choices. And as you said, you work for us, which was, is on your website. And so I hope you will take our voices into consideration. Thank you.
And that concludes general public comment for today. Thank you all for coming here. Thanks for your voices. We will take a quick break before we head to our departmental items. So let's take a fifteen-minute break. All right, we are back from a short break for departmental item number one. Madam Clerk, I know we have a continuance requested for this item to be moved to December 9th.
Yes, Chair Caps and members of the board. Departmental item number one, as previously read, is from the Public Works Department. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the adoption of our proposed transportation impact mitigation fee ordinance for the Public Works Department services, and we had a request from the department to continue this item to the December 9, 2025 meeting.
Chair Caps, I'll move that to December 9.
Okay, just a quick clarification. I just want to ask if there's any public comment on the continuance, just to check that box.
Chair Caps and members of the board, we did have an early request to speak on this item, but my office did inform them that the item would be continued, so the comments should be related to the continuance itself, and that person is not logged into Zoom.
Okay, then we're good for your motion.
And I will second.
Yeah, just a little staff direction on it too as well, is that we're continuing it so that we can get a little bit more public outreach. And there was a few groups that had been mentioned that if Public Works and the team could reach out to those folks.
Yep.
And they can contact Bob's office, my office, if they need a little bit more direction on who to talk to. Thanks.
Sounds good. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Nelson, and then we have a second by Supervisor Hartman on the continuance of departmental item number one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we can move to departmental item number two. Director Hamami.
Chair Caps and members of the board, departmental item number two is from the County Health Department. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the County Health Department budget rebalancing plan to address revenue shortfall for federally qualified health centers in fiscal year 2025 through 2026.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. Here with Gus Mahay, our Chief Financial Officer, Lars Seifert, who is our Deputy Director for Operations, and Lindsay Walters, who's Deputy Director for Clinical Services. Several weeks ago, when we brought this item to you due to the anticipated shortfall for the inability to see a portion of our patients, there were so many uncertainties. And till today, those uncertainties are still not any clearer, and many of the questions that we had are still remain, they still remain unanswered. However, one certainty is a fact, is that every decision and every action and every direction that we wanted to take was to put our patients first and to make sure that we are not jeopardizing access to care nor the disruption of services to a population that is very vulnerable and in need for health care. So we are still committed, and we still remain as we were, to do what is best in the interest of our patients. With that, when we came to the board on the 7th and this item was decided to be continued, we had directions from your board to go back and conduct additional outreach with our stakeholders and community members. There was also a direction for Human Resources to communicate with the union and see what can be done to mitigate the layoffs. And finally, some updates from County Council on where the litigation is and what is happening on the legal arena. So we're here to report that we had several outreach for stakeholders as well as community members. And with the stakeholders, we tried first to start speaking with our health care partners. And we participated in many events. Some of those were routinely scheduled. Some of those were routinely scheduled, we participate in regardless, such as the Community Steering Committee that is held by SNCAL Health, that has many of the healthcare organizations as well as community partners. And we presented at each one of those meetings what our plans and how we wanted to approach the transition. And we also made sure that we are correcting some of the inaccurate facts that might have been circulating, or some of the confusion that is out there. We also held two major meetings with our own providers. These are our clinicians that work at our community health centers. And it was very useful to also hear from them as they voiced their concern of the patients that they know the best, because these are their patients, they're responsible for their care. And they gave us very good feedback and very good insight into if a transition plan should happen, how to conduct that. We also hosted a Zoom meeting, or a Teams meeting, where we invited everybody, including our major health systems, such as Cottage and Lompoc Valley Medical Center, Marion Hospital, but also our partners that are like us, FQHCs, in addition to the Hospital Association of Central America, and of course, SNCAL Health and others. And we updated everybody on our plan and what the direction that we were heading towards. We also participated in many community functions. One specific is the Juntos en Voz A Acción, that is a community led here in Northern County. It is co-chaired by Tuchempo Digital and One Community Action. And this is, was very good meeting because it truly had, the meeting was whole conducted in Spanish language, and there was translation, but it had all the organizations that are dealing with this population and with the immigrant population, such as MyCope, as well as Future Leaders of America, Vision Compromiso, and Prometora de la Comunidad, and others. And it was mostly a dialogue where we shared what our plan is. We also had so many of the inaccurate information corrected. And we also wanted to hear from our partners and our community partners. And this conversation was very beneficial both ways, because, as I said, there was a lot of dispelling of some of the information that was out there, but we also heard a lot of the feedback and the fears that our community members had. These meetings are not stopping. In fact, we just had one last evening with, that was coordinated by Supervisor Lee, where many of our community partners also shared some of their opinions, as well as some of the questions. And we pledged to continue this dialogue, because what we are experiencing is not going to end today or next week. We believe that there are going to be so many challenges. And the only way of addressing those challenges is to go at it as a group of community partners, because there are so many things that we might be limited to what we can do, that other partners can support us, and vice versa. So we are looking into maybe establishing a smaller working group that we can pitch ideas at, especially as we will see in, towards the end of this presentation, there are challenges that we're going to face regardless of what the decision might be in terms of the injunction and in terms of the lawsuit. So we have decided to pause the transition of our UIS patients, patients with unsatisfactory immigration status. And as you know, when we came last time, the shortfall was because we set a date of January 1st to transfer what was 7,500 UIS patients. Now there's 7,000 UIS patients. But we paused that. We informed SNCAL that we do not want to initiate any of the transfer, and we are continuing to provide care to this population. But I always see something positive and something that is bad. And the silver lining is that we had, because we had that dry run, because we were proactive, because we preempted things, we have now a very shovel-ready, robust transition plan that if ever needed, we can implement without the need to guess, or without the need to, again, put the continuity of care for this population at risk. And the big if is if needed. And if needed is what we are now being driven by. We also secured one, I guess, major win is by exploring the transition. We were able to gauge the capacity of our community providers, and we were able to look at how many providers might be out there that will be able to absorb this population in case there is a transition. And we have some guarantees of almost 31 primary care providers that have ensured that they're willing to take those patients if needed, and they also have the capacity to that. So this is a very positive thing, that while others were waiting to guess what's going to happen, we had a plan. We also have a team. The other big win is that of those 7,000 patients, we were able to identify those that are at highest risk, those that require extensive care coordination. And we now are paying more attention to this population as our patients, but also if there is a need for, at any time for them to be transferred, then we know exactly what is needed and how we can cater to their needs. And we shared some of the highlights of our transition coordination plan, as well as our team, transition coordination team, that is now established at every health center with both our health partners and as well as our community partners. And I believe they were very happy in understanding the extent of the planning that went into our plan. Of course, since we are not anticipating, not seeing patients, then we do not anticipate the loss of revenue, and therefore, we are no longer asking for a mid-year budget readjustment. And if there is any changes in the legal matter, or if the injunction is lifted, or if there is a, if that issue is still relevant, then we will come back to the board with an action that would address that. But for now, for the time being, we are not going to stop seeing patients, so therefore, we are not anticipating a loss of revenue. Another factor that played into our decision as well, beside the feedback and the conversation that we had from our community partners, is we understand that there might be some changes happening in February in the legal matter. I know that the federal government has filed for an appeal, and I think there is an accelerated schedule for a decision to be made in February. And this is why we decided that probably January is a little bit too early, so we can wait for February. Because we are not anticipating any of the revenue loss, then we are no longer asking to reduce our workforce by 55.2 FTE for now. Again, the reason for now, because things might change, but also, as we will share with you, there are other things that we are looking at on the horizon that are going to play probably more important role in next year's budget. Our patient care is not going to change. We still are going to serve everybody. Everybody will receive the care that we continue to provide, such as primary care, family planning, gynecology, immunization, and everything, as well as well child exams. However, we are still considering evaluating the services that we are not mandated to provide. Those are specifically the specialty services that we are providing at Santa Barbara, but we are not taking any action on that. But if we need to accommodate some shortfalls in our next year's budget, then the specialty services are going to be probably the first we are going to evaluate, as long as we ensure that alternatives for our patients, as well as a transition. And this has nothing to do with the UIS. This would be everybody that is benefiting from those services. And as long as there are alternatives within the healthcare systems to serve this population, then that might be something that we would like to consider as we are tackling our budget for the next fiscal year. Ask County HR if they want to add something, but I know that there has been also, as requested by your board, to go back and discuss with the union, and I believe they met with both the SEIU Local 620 and 721, because we asked them that, or we did say that we are no longer eliminating any positions. I believe the efforts were paused. I don't know, County HR, if there's anything more you want to add?
No, that's accurate. We've laid them on pause, and we can pick them up if necessary.
However, although we have some time now where we are not anticipating this shortfall of revenue, it is also very important to keep in mind that as we are planning for next year's budget, that we came to the board and started with a structural deficit because of the increase in salaries and benefits, and also the supplies and everything and the services that we provide, that we are starting next fiscal year with a structural deficit of almost 7.6 million dollars. But there are other things that are related to UIS but not coming from the federal government, and those are more related to the state budget. There are two things that are happening on the state level. One is going to take effect into January, where no longer people with unsatisfied immigration status can enroll for Medi-Cal. So that is going to increase the chances of people being uninsured, or people that do fall off Medi-Cal, and that will increase the uninsured population. And because we and other FQHCs are safety nets, then we are still going to see a higher percentage of uninsured. And add to it that come July 1st, the state budget also changed the rate that they will reimburse us for seeing the UIS populations. For those that are familiar with the prospective payment system versus fee for service, we as an FQHC benefit from a higher rate, and it's a bundled rate. If we switch to fee for service, so for example, if we charge $100, the state is going to only reimburse us $8 or $10. So we estimate that this is going to cost us, come July, which is next year, this is going to cost us a shortfall of 6.6 million dollars, even if we continue to see the UIS population. And that is unrelated to the federal issue. Not to leave the federal out of that, HR1 also have set so many changes that are going to affect who qualifies for Medicaid, and who can, and the requirements and all that. And we anticipate something along the neighborhood of 3.2 million dollars loss of revenue for Medi-Cal recipients. So to add all this, we created this chart, and they say a picture is worth a thousand words. Unless something drastic happens, then that bar on the, my right, is going to amount to almost 17.4 million dollars of shortfall in our budget for next fiscal year. That is almost 28% of our health center budget. And this is what we are faced with. This is what we are going to work on, and this is what we will come back to you with the budget workshops and the budget discussions. And it will require some major changes, as well as some drastic measures. And hence, this is why we talk about services that we are not required to do, but it's, we've been doing those, such as the specialty services and others. But again, this is something to look forward as we move along. However, as it relates to our item today, then we are coming to the board with a no-action vote on what we have proposed on October 7th. We are not reducing any of our positions, and therefore, this is not going to create any shortfall for this fiscal year for now, again. And that's our ask for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamami. Questions from the board? Supervisor Hartman.
So for this fiscal year, how much is your budget in the red?
Supervisor Hartman to the chair, we're projecting about 5.1 million dollars that we're, will be drawing out of fund balance, or a reserve fund.
And we still have fund balance to cover that?
Correct, yes.
But the fund balance is exhausted pretty much by this?
By the rate we're burning through it, it will last two years max, and this is why we need to really look into it. But that fund balance use has nothing to do with the anticipated 5.6 of the UIS. So this is based on our budget of this fiscal year.
Yeah, we'll get to, questions to the board, and then we'll take public comment. Yeah. Supervisor Nelson, did you have a question?
Yeah, I think you got it answered. I was just curious about what the fund balance was overall. So over around $10 million, I guess, was?
About 16. I think there is a slide that shows the fund balance.
Yeah, so we began the current fiscal year with 11.2 million. We're expected to finish with roughly 6.2 million dollars, and that will be the beginning fund balance for next fiscal year.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Lee, did you have a question?
I just want to say that Marina Owens is here with her team from SNCAL, and anybody here from the board or the public want to make comments or answer, or Marina herself would like to say something, it's a great opportunity. Thank you for being here.
Okay. I just had two questions before we go to public comment, but thank you so much, Dr. Hamami, for this presentation and for really taking the board's direction to heart on October 7th, and for doing so much outreach and listening to the advocates and how hard they worked. We're going to hear from some of them, I imagine. So my question, my first question relates to the advocates. And I heard a lot about the outreach that has happened, and I know how hard you work, and how hard your team works, and you're stretched thin, clearly. And you're, I hear this spirit of wanting to continue that momentum, continue that dialogue as we go into such challenging times. And I also hear a real sense of leadership from you. This is coming from another source. This is, this is, this is a real scary, traumatic time of cuts, deep cuts, for the most vulnerable population that you're having to deal with, that we're having to deal with, and make the best of a bad situation, and trying to collaborate, trying to listen to those who have committed themselves to protect that, those populations. How, what's, can you just flesh out a little bit more of what's the plan for keeping in touch with, with the advocates? You said, you mentioned a working group. I know in the past, you've had a position for outreach to vulnerable populations. Just, can you just flesh out a little bit more details of how you plan to keep that up, given everything else that you have with a budget deficit, et cetera?
Absolutely. So first of all, we, everybody knows where we are. We never say no to any meeting.
Sure.
And I think we've been accessible, and we will continue being accessible. And we appreciate also every one of you and your office facilitating some of those. So those will continue. We have also our, the healthcare community decided that we need to have that as a recurrent monthly meeting. We are doing that as well. One idea is we are going to engage a facilitator and maybe look into some of those partners that we weren't so much in touch with, and rebuild that relationship, and start having sessions when, where real issues are being discussed in terms of shortfalls of budget or things, and identifying resources, or identifying solutions. There are a lot of work that was happening in the past, for example, where yesterday at the meeting with Supervisor Lee, somebody mentioned the language barrier, and specifically with the Massteco population. We have been working very well with MyCope and Hurencia Indigenous, where we even hire translators in our, in our community centers to provide those services. So these are still continuing, those relationships, but those relationships that maybe I, as a newcomer to the county, is not very in touch with, is now putting more effort into building those relationships and strengthening those. Again, there are things that, there are limitations to what can be done, both for resources or financial limitations, but what it is, what we hope to establish is to tap into any resources or any solutions that we might not be aware of. And how can some of those things, even if it's the worst-case scenario? Let's say there is a need for transition. Well, that need for transition is going to require transportation, it's going to require translation, it's going to require care coordination. If that is the only solution, then we certainly want our advocates, our community partners, to be partners in this, rather than to be on the sidelines and not supporting such. And again, this is a big if, if there is a need. If there is any solution that is out there that can prevent or preempt this, or not get us to that. So. us to that state by finding alternatives, then we are all ears and would be more than happy to exhaust any potential direction that anyone can tell us about.
Yeah, I just commend you again, because I, and particularly the advocates, because, I mean, I have such anger at the federal government for this ruling, for having to deal with this at all, for targeting the undocumented and of all things for their healthcare. But what we're doing, and I mean, what this forced was really to step up and create these relationships, because times are going to be even tougher than they are now. We just looked at the numbers. This is, it's not like we sort of fix this and we move on to smoother sailing. It's going to get tougher. And so making sure that we really are in communication as things get tougher. And so, and the way that we can help, I appreciate that you had a meeting yesterday, ways that our offices can help facilitate that, so that's really helpful. My second question has to do with specialty care, because we've just been hearing about certain programs like OB-GYN program in Lompoc. That's not agendaized for today, so I'm not asking about specifics, but, and I just want some clarity that what the UIS situation, that's, that doesn't, that's not, I think people are conflating a lot, and it's been a little confusing for us. And I guess, I guess my request and question is, when you do come back with budget considerations, if there can be some explanation to the board and the public of what's the changing? Because clearly you have some real deficits, and as you just mentioned, in passing almost, that's where the budget savings might have to come.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I think there is a little bit of confusion of mixing the UIS issue with regular operations and decisions that we had to make regardless. So there is a scarcity in OB-GYN providers, and many of the decisions that we had to do in North County was because we couldn't find any providers. And when we met with Marion and CHC and others, and they said, well, we can be the alternative, that was the decision how to do it. It had nothing to do with the UIS. We do not have that luxury in Santa Barbara, so we are still committed to providing some level of OB-GYN in Santa Barbara. In Lompoc, we are talking and we are discussing some potential. So unfortunately, the timing and the charge in the community is now thinking that everything is driven because of the federal bill or because of the UIS. Those were things that we were considering two years ago because of how hard it is to find providers and because of the cost of providing those services while someone else can provide them. And yet, again, as I mentioned at the beginning, nobody is going to be left without care. So even when we decide to close a service that we are required to do, there are ways in making sure that those services are still provided. And this is where, before we decided on closing OB services in Santa Maria, we had, Dr. Prisciano can give you the full details, met with everybody at Marion, with the chief medical officer at, at community health centers as well, to identify an alternative. Because the last thing we want is for patients not to have services.
Okay. Thank you for that. Supervisor Nelson?
Yes, thank you. You know, the discussion around specialty services is, you know, has me thinking, and you know, something you said was that you guys weren't able to find providers down in the South Coast to do these specialty care. And just, I guess I'm confused, just because there's so much more healthcare down in the South Coast than in the North County, and so I'm just trying to get my brain wrapped around so many resources down there.
Yeah, no, the reason, yes.
Can't find people to serve this population versus less resources up here.
The only reason I mentioned south, because Santa Barbara is the only clinic where we offer specialty care. Anybody else like Lompoc and Santa Maria and all that, there are specialists that provide specialty care. But we, as a primary care FQHC, are not required by HERSA or by the grant to provide surgery and neurology and endocrinology and all that. At some point, it was decided in Santa Barbara specifically to provide those services. And these are the ones that we are reconsidering because, one, we are not required to, and two, because there is an abundance of specialists that can take that population.
Okay, that helps.
But that's the only reason why, no, no, we, there is an abundance of specialty care elsewhere, but we are not providing those.
We serve on top of that. Got it.
Okay, I think we'll move to public comment at this point for this item, Department Item Number Two.
Chair Caps and members of the board, we have 16 requests to speak from the public on this item. We are going to begin on Zoom with Abigail Corsole, to be followed by Sarah Grusen.
Hello. My name is Abigail Corsole. I'm a senior attorney with the National Health Law Program, based in Los Angeles. Others here will explain that it is possible that the injunction barring the administration's PRRORAH notice will remain in place permanently, and the notices may never go into effect for the county's health center. But I want to emphasize that even if the injunction is lifted, the county is still exposed to risk if it makes transfers prematurely, as Dr. Hamami just noted. So it is really important that the county take its time if and when the time comes for transfers, when transfers become necessary, to really ensure that they are done right. The U.S. Supreme Court has held that absent a clear federal requirement, when state or local governments restrict access to governmental benefits on the basis of immigration status, those restrictions violate the Equal Protection Clause of the United States Constitution. And courts have also held that locally imposed restrictions on government benefits for immigrants are preempted by federal law and invalid. So here, if the county acts to limit access to the health centers for certain immigrants before it is legally required to do so, it is exposing itself to legal liability. In addition, we're very concerned that it appears that the county and SNCAL are using unsatisfactory immigration status, which is a Medi-Cal or Medicaid term of art, as a proxy for not qualified under the PRRORAH Act. Those two are not the same, and using one as the proxy for another will mean that some people, particularly recent green card recipients, will be transferred unnecessarily. And of course, that also creates a risk of legal liability. So our request to you is that, you know, in the case, it turns out that the injunction is reversed and notices go into effect, which again, is very unlikely, as some of my colleagues will speak to, we're encouraging you not to rush, but to take this issue slowly, make sure you're consulting with appropriate stakeholders, ensure that the appropriate procedures and protections are in place before taking any action. Thank you.
We will now go to Sarah Grusen, to be followed by Joshua Stahl.
Hello. Hi, so I'm Sarah Grusen. I'm also a senior attorney at the National Health Law Program, and I, I'm going to build on what Abby talked about. I wanted to speak today about this sort of if-needed standard for transfers to highlight that even if the worst-case scenario happens and the injunction is overturned, the health center's funding is not immediately at risk, and that there are many steps that would have to happen before the funding would be lost. So I just want to pull out, and I know that I've spoken to several of you about this already, but the federal government itself has repeatedly stated, and I'm quoting now, that the notices do not require adoption of specific verification methods and do not identify any consequences that will follow from failure to verify. They also say, quote, "Nowhere do the notices suggest an immediate loss of federal funding", end quote. "There is no imminent threat of funding loss because agency enforcement processes have historically involved notice and the opportunity for a noncompliant entity to come into compliance." So the reason they can make all these statements in the lawsuit is because the federal regulations, there are federal regulations that govern the steps that have to be taken before the federal government could withhold funding. These include imposing additional conditions on the grant and providing the opportunity for the health center to comply with those additional terms. In fact, there was an HHS official who swore under oath and penalty of perjury in the lawsuit that those are the processes the federal government is, quote, "required to follow" before they would decide to terminate funds. He swore that HHS would take steps including technical assistance, site visits, a corrective action plan, or additional terms. And so the health centers would have ample opportunity to come into compliance before putting their funding at risk. Finally, even if all that came to pass, and for some reason the health centers still couldn't comply at that future date, even after the technical assistance, even after the additional terms, they would still have an opportunity to challenge the decision through a notice and appeal process. So like Abby, my request to you is that if it turns out the injunction is reversed, and if it turns out that the notices go into effect, don't rush into action. Take this one step at a time, and don't bypass these important protections and procedures. Thank you.
We will now go to Joshua Stelik, to be followed by Miriam Shaw.
Hi. My name's Joshua Stelik. I'm the policy director at the California Immigrant Policy Center, and also a lawyer who's been monitoring the PRRORAH litigation closely. And I just want to say at the outset that we greatly appreciate the Board of Supervisors and Department of Public Health's pause on the proposed patient transfers. So much of the public discussion about the proposed transfer of over 7,500 immigrant patients out of the county clinics, centers around California and 21 other states, legal challenge to the PRRORAH notice. So I and lawyers from the National Health Law Program, whom you've just heard from, wanted to provide clarity on the strength of the injunction in the case, and as Sarah mentioned, the many steps the federal government would need to take if that injunction were to be reversed. So the Trump administration, policy change pertaining to PRRORAH is currently blocked by a federal court, and the court did not see this as a close call, but rather found that the Trump administration's policy is unlawful in, quote, "at least four different ways." And in its analysis and deciding on the injunction, the court found that the suing states, including California, are likely to win the case. The same Congress that passed PRRORAH only a few weeks later passed the federal legislation that created the health centers, and that also requires them to provide care to, quote, "all residents of the area," unquote, "served by the center." And under standard canons of statutory interpretation, as the federal district court found, the more specific requirements of the health center legislation take priority over the more general language of PRRORAH, which the same Congress had passed earlier. Thus, the county's health centers remain obligated under federal law to serve all residents of the area, and agency guidance like the PRRORAH notice at issue here cannot change that. Beyond that, regulations that PRRORAH requires have never, never been promulgated, as the government acknowledged in the underlying litigation. The PRRORAH statute itself requires the U.S. Attorney General to promulgate regulations pertaining to verification of immigration status for federal public benefits, and then provide states 24 months from the date of the regulation to comply. And the federal government in this litigation acknowledged that such a regulation has never been finalized. Thus, California's 24-month clock to comply with federal verification requirements has not yet even started. And beyond that, no program-specific guidance has been issued, even though the PRRORAH notice in question here states that further regulation or guidance will be issued to explain when and how immigration status verification would be required. So given that there's no regulation or further guidance from the Trump administration here on implementing the PRRORAH notice, there aren't yet any specific requirements for the health centers to comply with. Were the county to move forward with patient transfers, which we understand have been paused, it would be doing so despite the policy being blocked by a federal court as unlawful in multiple ways and without any guidance on appropriate implementation. We thus appreciate the support.
Thank you, Joshua. That is your time.
Thank you.
We will now go to Miriam Shaw, to be followed by Anna Ars.
Hi. Good morning, supervisors and Chair Caps. Again, this is Miriam Shaw, the Director of Public Affairs for Planned Parenthood Central Coast Action Fund. At PPCCAF, we fight for a future where all people have equitable opportunity to experience health and wellness. And today, a step toward that health equity includes following staff's recommendation and putting a hold on all proposed patient transfers and medical layoffs. While we applaud the outreach that has now been done on the issue, future decisions require community-based solutions, and we support the establishment of a health access task force to accomplish this. At Planned Parenthood Central Coast Action Fund, we know as well as any healthcare organization that this federal administration has proven to be minute-to-minute, hour-to-hour, and without regard for the actual health and wellness of our communities. Attempting to appease this administration or comply with anything in advance is futile. So let's work together on solutions that will truly keep our community safe and healthy. Thank you.
We will now go to Anna Ars, to be followed by Chelsea Lancaster. Anna, we have unmuted you on our end. If you can unmute on your end to provide your comments. Alrighty, Anna, it appears you are unmuted, but we can't hear you. Perhaps your microphone, oh, there you go. Yes, we can hear you now. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you. So good morning. My name is Anna Arsie. I am a policy advocate for cause, and I'm here today because healthcare is a human right, not something that should be threatened, traded, or taken away based on immigration status or budget shortfalls. We urge you today to cancel all proposed patient transfers and layoffs permanently. No one should be in fear of losing their doc, their doctor because of the, quote, "unsatisfactory immigration status." That language alone is dehumanizing. Transferring community puts lives at risk, disrupts ongoing treatment. Every principle of health equity this county claims to stand for, and laying off frontline staff only destabilizes the very clinics our communities rely on. Commit to transparent community center processes, create a county-wide health access task force. We need a formal table where community advocates, labor unions, public health leadership, SNCAL trusted service organizations, and legal experts work together. This task force must stay in place until all threats to healthcare access are resolved. No more decisions made behind closed doors, no more policies that disproportionately impact immigrant families. Let's be clear, this is about community safety, racial and economic justice, and the moral responsibility of this county to protect our most vulnerable. We, when we cut healthcare, when we transfer patients, when we break trust, the ones who suffer are children, elders, disabled residents, and undocumented workers who hold our local community together. We deserve a healthcare system that lifts people up, not one that divides them. We deserve policies rooted in dignity, compassion, and equity, and we deserve a county that listens to its community and leads with justice. Thank you.
We will now go to Anna Garcia. Then we will return to Santa Maria with Shauna Stillwell. Oh, my apologies. We will now go to Chelsea Lancaster, and then Anna Garcia, who's our, before we return to Santa Maria.
Hi, Board of Supervisors, community. I don't want to take a lot of time. I just want to amplify the points that have already been made, especially from the longtime immigrant rights activists, legal experts, and health experts in the room. I remember during COVID, when we declared a public health crisis, there was a migrant task force that was developed that allowed those who were most at risk, who, those who continue to be most at risk, our most valuable community members, to be at the table when public health decisions were made. Again, it's really important if we claim to be a county that, that supports the dignity of all people. That means the people that are closest to the pain and people that are closest to the impact of the decisions that you make at that table, which frankly, most of those folks are not represented when we look at the makeup of council, we cannot take these things lightly. So what, what I would suggest is look at the folks that were on that list, on that task force, and start there. The decisions made here will not only impact our county, but will have a lasting impact elsewhere. People are looking to us to be leaders, to be champions, again, of dignity, of public safety, and of community health. And I really urge you, again, do not obey in advance and listen to the experts that are coming to you and telling you, yeah, how to move through this crisis. Thank you so much.
We will now go to Anna Garcia. Then we will return to Santa Maria with Shauna Stillwell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You're just a little quiet, so if you can speak up, that would be great. Please proceed.
Hello. I am here to acknowledge the updates shared by the Director. We appreciate the clarity that the department is not moving forward with any patient transfers at this time, and that there will be no positions cut at this time. But we cannot ignore the presentation, what the presentation made clear. The structural deficit isn't going away, and when budgets tighten, the first proposals historically placed on chopping block are those that protect our most vulnerable and impacted communities and our frontline clinic workers. Even with these actions being paused today, the underlying threat is still there. The community needs guarantees that these ideas will not return under pressure next year. So we demand that you make a permanent commitment to immigrant patients, that they will not face transfers based on immigration status. Healthcare access must never depend on paperwork, or politics, or fear. It is a human right, and it's an issue of morality. The second demand is that we guarantee workforce protections. Our clinic staff are essential. They're already wildly understaffed. How dare we even consider cutting any of those positions? Third, we want to rebuild trust with transparency. Last time, we found out about this because journalists published an article about it. Let's not do that again. And fourth, let's establish the Health Access Task Force, a group that includes a collective representation of our community who is committed to co-create solutions and reduce harm. I also want to finish by recalling the comments made by Supervisor Steve L., that as solutions continue to be explored, paraphrase, I'm going to paraphrase here, but maybe there needs to be a more holistic review of the city's budget, and prior, I'm sorry, the county's budget, and prioritize funding based on the needs of we the people. We understand that budget challenges are real, but so is the harm that's caused when safety nets get cut. We're talking about family stability, public trust, and the human right to healthcare, and we ask you all to commit today to transparency, community partnership, and long-term protection for all patients and frontline workers, and to be open to creative and collaborative problem-solving that bucks fascist and fascist policies. Do not do this. Thank you.
We will now return to Santa Maria with Shawna Stillwell to be followed by Rochelle. Shawna?
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Capps, Vice Chair Nelson, and fellow board members. My name is Shawna Stillwell, and I still live in Orchid since 1980. I'm a human rights advocate, communications grad student, public speaker, and a recovery-informed leader with a decade of sobriety and an undergrad in human services with a concentration in addiction, who works with Dream.org's nationally-recognized criminal justice lobbying cohort. My entire career is built on improving systems, expanding access, and preventing the very harms we're here talking about today. But none of that started in a classroom or in a policy cohort. It started right here in this county. Watching racism and systemic neglect play out in front of my face as a child. I talked earlier about the incident in the 80s when Santa Barbara County Sheriff's deputies threw my brown friends on the sidewalk in Orchid at gunpoint while I, the privileged white girl in the backseat, was told, "You're not the problem." That moment didn't just impact me, it shaped the entire trajectory of someone I know. One of those friends, someone who became a family member to me through his child, never recovered from what this county put him through. The profiling, the humiliation, the constant reminder that he was considered the problem, the lack of access to mental health care, the untreated trauma, the stigma, all of it compounded, and I truly believe it contributed to the substance use and lifelong mental health disorder that slowly destroyed his life. And I think about that every single time I see this county repeat the same patterns. I ask myself, if he had been treated the way I was treated, if he had been given the same care, the same respect, the same chance at recovery, could he have had a different outcome today? Would his kids still have an active father? Would he have persevered long enough to find recovery I was lucky enough to find? This is why this agenda item is not procedural. It isn't paperwork. It isn't budget tinkering. It's literally life and death. When you propose transferring immigrant patients because of unsatisfactory immigration status, you are telling entire communities, the same communities who were targeted when I was a kid, that they are still the problem. When you propose layoffs at federally qualified health centers, you're stripping care from the people who need it most: immigrants, low-income families, disabled residents, people battling addiction, people living with untreated trauma, people like my friend. We know what happens when people can't access care in this county. We know what untreated trauma turns into. We know what discrimination does to a human being's sense of worth, and we know who pays the price. So today, although I'm grateful for the pause, I'm asking you, not just as someone with professional expertise, but as someone who has buried people I love because the system like this one failed them. We know that our policies reflect our values, and public health is public safety. Please, because of that, we are requesting full transparency from you and a commitment to not let previous mismanagement of budget and cruel federal overreach dictate care. Cancel, not just pause, all patient transfers and layoffs indefinitely. Commit to any future plans will not be hidden from the public and the coalitions invested in vulnerable communities.
Thank you, Shawna. That is your time.
No more journalists informing us of what the county intentionally kept quiet. Create a Health Access Oversight Task Force that includes 805 Undocu-
Shawna, that's your time.
Why don't you follow the rules?
Thank you. That's your time.
That's what I'm... You're asking us to follow rules you can't follow. Sad.
Interesting.
Okay. We will now go to Rochelle to be followed by Primitiva Hernandez.
I'd like to comment on I have a... And it doesn't have anything to do with that. But it does... Can I?
Sure.
Thank you. So this is, the reason why I got frustrated is because I don't see the activist community coming out and providing us with anything except, you know, pause indefinitely, demand, you know, a permanent solution where we never lay anybody off. I don't know if you guys, did you not watch the beginning of that presentation where it says that-
Okay, let's, let's-
I mean, do you not, did you not see that there's the reality? We have to deal with the reality here. I can't just decide, oh, I'm going to do whatever I want to do. And yes, this is a huge priority. I don't, I don't understand why, knowing, no one's acting like there hasn't been any progress made on this. This environment changes on a daily basis. The rules are changing constantly. I applaud Director Hamami for all the outreach that he's done, but it's just not reasonable to come in and say, "We're not going to have any cuts. We're not going to do anything. We're just going to continue to provide everything that we've always provided." We receive our funding from the federal government for public health, vast majority of it. And yes, I'm the one that actually said, "Let's try to look at it holistically and maybe take money from somewhere else and put it into public health." But you can't look at this and just say, "Oh, okay, it's all good. We're just going to continue to do what we're doing. We're not going to get the funding. We'll keep providing the services." At the end of the day, the lights get turned out. That's what ends up happening. People don't get paid. It's not an endless supply of cash just floating around in these back rooms here that we just keep shoveling into something. If there's not money there, we can't continue to provide the services. People just don't show up because they want to. They show up because they get paid to do it at the clinic. If we're not paying the people, they're not going to be there to provide the services. So I want everybody to get, and the reason why I'm frustrated is, I want everybody to get on the same page. We want the same thing you do. We want people to get proper healthcare, regardless of status. Okay? We don't, that's why we don't ask for people's paperwork when they come to our clinics. Okay? We've been doing this for years, providing these services. And we're trying to find the best way to manage in a very changing environment. So yes, I think we did the right thing at the time. Look and see what other options were out there. And those steps that Dr. Hamami took are going to reap a benefit down the road, because now we have the relationships built. Now we have a pathway forward. And I think it's to his credit and to this board's credit that we haven't gone forward with any cuts, that we're looking strongly at, what are our other options? But to stick our head in the sand and just say, "Hey, we're being demanded not to, you know, we're never going to make any cuts," and we get these calls to be collaborative, but at the same time, I need to collaborate with people that are on the same page as us, or at least me. And my page is, and I can't speak for everybody else, is, "I want to provide these services as much as you do." And we're trying to figure out ways to make that happen, but showing up and telling us that, you know, we're the problem. When we're dealing with somebody that's over our level and we're trying to fix what we consider their mistakes along the way, I don't think is helpful. You know, we're calling for these, we're calling for a tiger team or a subcommittee to work on this, but if we walk into that room and people aren't going to be honest with the reality of what the finances, the finances are, then it's not going to really work. I can't go to somebody and you just say, "Look, we're never going to make any cuts. No one's ever losing, you know, all services are going to be provided. Add infinitum regardless of what the finances are." That doesn't help me. So I want what you want. I'm trying to make that happen, and I'm dedicated to working with anybody, including you, that is on that page. But we got to be realistic at the same time.
Okay. We will now go to Rochelle to be followed by Primitiva Hernandez.
Oh, I thought that was the end of public comment. I'm sorry. Shoot. That's why I asked to speak. I'm sorry.
We got a few more.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I guess.
Hello, Chair Capps and County Supervisors. My name is Sarah Nolan Moreno. Rochelle has asked me to convey her comments since she had to go back to work. Is that allowed?
Adam Clerk, what's the rules there? That's true. I haven't closed public comment yet, so we just need you to fill out the form, so that'll be fine. But at this moment, I'll close public comment.
Okay.
Yeah. And you can fill the form out after you speak.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can keep going. Keep going. Yes.
Okay. So Rochelle says, "Hello again, Chair Capps and County Supervisors. Again, my name is Rochelle, and I am a nurse. My understanding of this issue is that we are decreasing access to preventative care. When you decrease access to preventative care, you increase the likelihood that people will forego medical care for their injuries and illnesses until they become so sick that they need emergency care. This is more expensive and is not cost-effective, and this contributes to increasing emergency room wait times. So hospitals like the one in Lompoc where you are from, Supervisor Nelson, or other small hospitals who serve vulnerable populations may feel the brunt of this more than others. Surely, the responsible thing to do is to not decrease access to preventative care and to instead create policies that improve health outcomes and quality of care." She says, "Please, continue your work to create a Health Access Task Force." Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We will now go to Primitiva Hernandez to be followed by Leo DeCassis. Primitiva?
Thank you. I want to start by thanking the Board of Supervisors for that October 7 courageous motion to postpone hearing this item, because I truly believe that that's where things shifted for us. So thank you for doing that. September 24th is when the article came out, and that's how many of us found out about what was happening. And since October 7, pause on the motion, our coalition, which I will name for the record in case it isn't clear as of today, it is CAAS, MICOP, the Fund for Santa Barbara, Future Leaders of America, California Immigrant Policy Center, Locals SEIU 620 and 721, Health Law Program, and 805 UndocuFund. That is the coalition that has been organizing since September 24th, when we found out about those news. Tell me one space where all of us were engaging in that conversation. It was when we started organizing, reaching out initially to Supervisor Capps and then the rest of the supervisors. We met with all the supervisors. We learned a lot through that process. And finally, thank you Supervisor Lee for helping us organize a meeting with Dr. Hamami yesterday. That's when we were all truly on one space. So there's a lot of stakeholders that need to be engaged, and that happened throughout the process, is what we hear. But we do need a space where this task force right here can engage, because we want to do that creatively. I think we understand that these are challenges, and yes, our wish would be no transfers, no layoffs permanently, right? We know that's not realistic, but can we be included in those conversations so that we, you can get community buy-in and so that there is no misinformation and confusion out there? Can we commit to that? Do you know where the idea of the task force was born? Supervisor Hartman, you may remember our meeting. You hinted to that, right? We were like, "Yes, let's build a task force." We mentioned that yesterday in our meeting with Dr. Hamami. So I am glad to see that there is that idea floating. Where it came from, it might have come from different places, but what matters is how we move forward as of today, how we can repair those relationships. It's going to take all of us. We are willing to come to the table. I think we've proven that we have access to resources that can help us think creatively and avoid any of that dismissive language that doesn't help any one of us. I think that's where we stand, and thank you for this opportunity to prove what we can bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to Leo DeCassis to be followed by Jay Forrest. Leo?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. My name is Leo DeCassis, representing the county health workers here at Santa Barbara County. I would like to begin by thanking county leadership, all of county leadership, for the pausing the immediate transfer of patients with UIS out of our county clinics. We vehemently support staff's recommendation today. While we acknowledge this win, we are here today to flag the concern that county health may resume transfers at one point immediately if the injunction is reversed, and I just want to reiterate our desire to wait for clear federal guidance until those transfers are initiated. While we also want to express our concern about the projected, the reality of the projected fiscal year deficit of next year. I think $7.6 million was mentioned during the presentation today. We urge the Board to reject any future recommendation that includes layoffs until all alternatives are explored and the labor unions are meaningfully engaged. Maintaining current staffing levels is critical to safeguarding public health for all residents in this county. Thank you.
We will now, we will now go to Jay Forrest to be followed by Laura Robinson. Jay?
Hello, Members of Board, everybody. My name is Jay Forrest. I have worked for the Public Health Department for the last 10 years. I stand before you, not as a medical assistant, but somebody committed to public health. Our mission statement is to improve the health of our communities by preventing disease, promoting wellness, and health equity, while ensuring access to needed healthcare and maintaining a healthy and safe environment. I know that, I recognize the efforts you guys have all placed into holding off on layoffs and everything, and Dr. Hamami's efforts also, but I also just urge everybody to protect our staff, lab technicians, nurses, support staff, because when staff is cut, prevention is cut, which is a much-needed safeguard in our community. Without lab technicians, we can't send patients to labs. If they are, have no transportation, then it's difficult for them to get those services, and then they have less- and then they have less healthcare. Health is influenced by the environment as well as social conditions which you live. So the Health Department prevents these issues from getting worse. We monitor diseases that disproportionately affect low-income neighborhoods, such as diabetes, hypertension, and obesity. We provide mental health services which reduce stigma and allow services to be rendered in the clinic, such as through Zoom meetings with psychiatric providers, so that patients do not have to go out of town for treatment or go without it. Reducing staff undermines these efforts directly by leaving our most vulnerable community members without protection. This would not only be a public health failure, but a moral failure. The weakening of our department weakens the safety net which protects our most vulnerable community members. Will layoffs balance the budget this year? Will the costs ripple throughout the next years? We already will see a long-term loss of patients due to the lack of OB providers at Lompoc Healthcare Center, which will weaken our ability to provide care for the women of our community. Without the ability to take in OB patients, these patients are sent elsewhere and will more than likely continue care elsewhere, which will affect us for years to follow. I urge you all to protect our staff and to show the health of our community is worth investing in. I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
We will now go to Laura Robinson to be followed by Karen Howenstein. Laura?
Hello, Chair Capps and the Board. My name is Laura Robinson. I'm the Executive Director of SEIU Local 620, and I promise I did come here today to express gratitude. I want to first say thank you for just postponing this decision. It really allowed us the opportunity to sit down, work things out, gather a lot more information, digest that information, and then obviously, the decision to pivot, I want to give credit where credit is due. We also learned a lot about Dr. Hamami and his team's plan for this transition, and it's actually really reassuring to see how much thought and consideration went into that process, and to know that we have that in the back pocket if the worst-case scenario arises. I'm hoping it doesn't. But I'm also not delusional. I recognize the economic reality that we're looking at in the future, and I'm going to touch on that a little bit more during the next agenda item. But I have to always express that I'm a labor partner, willing to work with you guys, and just again, say thank you for the current decision, and we will fight the next battle when that comes around. Thank you.
We will now go to Karen Howenstein to be followed by Alan Cronin. Karen?
Hello, Supervisors. She was talking about economic reality, economic reality to this board. So we're talking about a budget item here. Budgets are things you plan for. I know that this county did not plan to have to support the health services of so many illegal immigrants into our county. That was a liberal policy that was heaved upon us by Democrats in control, right? Biden's the one that let all the illegals in, right? And now we have to support them. So this could have been expected, that we weren't going to have the money in our budgets to support the services to the illegal immigrants. But now we're finding that because our county has gotten into the business of being a hospital, our county is now meeting like this is the board of a hospital district, and it's our responsibility to provide health services to everyone in our county as a county. You see, there's a reason why hospitals do that. You're talking earlier, Laura, about expanding the specialty services that are provided by the county. Why is that? Why aren't we allowing the hospital districts to do their job and then the county can do their job instead of trying to act like a hospital district? The reason why our county cannot support hospital services is because running hospitals and providing health services, especially these specialty services, is really the job of hospital boards. And natural consequences, you know what those are. This is a natural consequence to allowing uncontrolled illegal immigration. It's affecting our community, and that's why this is happening, not because anybody wants to deny services to people who need it. Thank you.
We will now go to Alan Cronin to be followed by Leo Smith, who is our final speaker. Alan?
My name is Alan. I am a registered nurse in the psychiatric outpatient clinic in Santa Barbara. I want to thank Supervisor, is it Prima Lavignino, for his comments earlier, both for the content and for the courage it takes to share the emotion behind that frustration. I recognize that. I feel that. Now, I come to you as a nurse. I'm not an accountant, I'm not an administrator, thank God, or a politician. All I can hope to do here is to share my little personal experience, that I believe I share with my colleagues, of what my clients are like. When I spoke before this board in October, I was deeply touched by the fact that most of the public comments were essentially advocacy for our clients. And I'm very proud of that, and I think that that supports the county's goals. But I would submit to you that my job and the job of any of the direct service staff in the county who deal with people in times of crisis, law enforcement, emergency service workers, et cetera, et cetera, you experience those people certainly by their data, by their name, their size, their weight, their ethnicity, their religion, but none of that is important ultimately in the delivery of services to the end user. And that creates a certain amount of frustration, which is what I recognize in what you were saying, sir. So seeing these people having support services and then seeing it taken away from them, or potentially taken away from them, creates a lot of anxiety. Now, I mentioned all the people that spoke in advocacy for the clients. I think that is compassion. And compassion, I think, is consistent with the county's values. Compassion to serve the people that are in need. And many of my clients, as I said the last time I spoke, are employed with jobs and they spend their money in the counties of Santa Barbara. They're a small part of the economy, but the significance to me is that I'm experiencing human beings, regardless of who they are, race, color, creed, religion, et cetera, even their name, their medication. I experience people. And that's a very different perspective, and I think only people who are serving directly to the public can understand in an emotional situation like that. So my appeal to the board is to vote against any legislation or action that would impede compassion, which can only be delivered by action. Thank you.
And we will now go to Santa Barbara with Leo Smith, who is our final speaker on this item. Leo?
Good day. Good day, Chair Capps, Members of the Board, and all community members here today and moving ahead. It's an honor to first give thanks to you all for your diligence and care of the members of these communities, our beloved family members, friends, and associates. And to the County Health Department Director, Lindsay Walter, Dr. Hamami, and all members of, and those who are of the Health Department's Board, it's a delight to serve alongside you all in this capacity, as I'm grateful and again honored to be a contributing member of the Santa Barbara County Public Health Department and beyond. Considering the notices set forth by the federal government regarding their desire to discontinue our ability to serve persons who have unsatisfactory immigration statuses, along with the understood implication that our noncompliance could have, and more so would have, then resulted in the plausible sanctions by the government that stretched beyond the impact of the undocumented residential population into programs and services operated and utilized by other qualified immigrants and ultimately with citizens for whom it is also our responsibility to provide successful decision-making in these regards. It's in hindsight that I refer you to the meeting of October 22, 2025, where it is public knowledge that the board, specifically myself, motioned to move forward with the transfer of 7,500, 7,500 community members who have had unsatisfactory immigration status, resulting in the, at the time, planned dissolution of 55-plus full-time employees as a method of protecting areas of service that could have been affected by the federal government's implied threat of additional sanctions. Yet at that time, it were also in my duty to pose the question that, as to what the true legal and qualitative meaning of resident truly holds. And due to the investigation that followed, among other factors, it has been found in statuses within the Healthcare Consolidation Act of 1996, Section 330, that bill established that health centers that provide primary care and certain additional services for all residents of the area, pardon me, for all residents of the area served by the center maintain verbiage that is more specific than the previously more broad descriptor of qualified immigrant, thus prioritizing for all residents as the law has promulgated therein. It is of this time, the County Health Department conducted a series of presentations and meetings with community stakeholders and healthcare organizations, and in light of the findings, we were able to move forward with the serving of UIS patients and the maintaining of all county jobs averting such dissolution. I am in agreement with the CHD having decided to pause the transition of patients with unsatisfactory immigration status to other providers.
Thank you, Leo. That is your time.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you to the members of the public. Supervisor Hartman?
Yes. I would like CEO Marina Owen of SNCAL to come up, if you would. She wasn't able to be here the last time. She was in Washington, working hard to fight some of these changes. Would you introduce your team? And then I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. One has to do with explaining the reduced reimbursement from the state and what the state will and won't cover with undocumented people, just to lay it out again, so it's clear for the public. And then to go into the requirements on HR1 that will be coming into effect, and what that means for organizations' budgets. And then the final question is kind of some of the work that SNCAL is doing to try to bring people together, because I think it's been extraordinary.
Thank you, Supervisor Hartman, Chair Capps, and members of the board. My name is Marina Owen, CEO of SNCAL Health. We're the Medi-Cal Managed Care Plan that serves our county of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties, and we ensure one in every three residents of Santa Barbara County, 240,000 people across both the region. You asked for me to introduce the members of our team. And so here today, we have Jordan Turetsky, who's our Strategic Engagement Officer. We have Dr. DeRinozzo, who does our health equity work and is our Chief Customer Experience Officer. We have our Chief Medical Officer, our physician, Dr. Maya Heinert. And we have a member of our board, also our recipient board member, Sarah McDonald. She represents the members on SNCAL Health's board. So you asked first for us to describe the changes from our view that impact the health centers from the state budget. And I'll begin by describing the first, which Director Hamami highlighted in his presentation, which is around the cap on all new members who would enroll that have that designation of unsatisfactory immigration status. That is not a term that we created, nor one that we believe best represents the valuable immigrants in our community, however, that's the definition the state's described. The second change begins in July of next year, and that is a reduction in what the FQ8Cs receive, which is called the prospective payment system. And so that rate is a bundled service rate, and that will be reduced beginning in July for certain populations. And that is because the state is working through its own budget challenges and will be grappling with some of the issues that you've described and are discussing here. It is also working with stakeholders, like some of those that gave public comment today from the California Policy Budget Institute and the National Immigrant Law Center, so valuable thought partners, both at the state and federal level. You also asked for us to discuss some of the changes on the horizon with HR1. So that's the federal, big, beautiful bill that was enacted on July 4. And so overall, it takes a trillion out of healthcare over 10 years. It's something that we at SNCAL have been watching closely, and our coalition, including the county of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo County, advocated against, given its impact on health. There are provisions that impact our local hospitals and their funding, your local clinics, and also residents of Santa Barbara County who may no longer qualify for Medi-Cal over time, given new requirements around eligibility determination. Your social services department's monitoring that closely, and SNCAL Health holds and hosts a quarterly steering committee of our community partners, with Supervisor Hartman serves on our board and acts as our liaison to that group, and it includes 70 community partners. It also includes CEO Mona and others. And so we'll look to support you in any of your Access Task Force work. SNCAL's Board of Directors is also looking to continue to establish new grant programs. So to the extent that we have funding available to support our community partners, the county being one of our most important, we'll be looking to support Director Hamami and others all towards that goal of providing, you know, all residents with the opportunity to thrive. You mentioned those community partners at the steering committee. We, our most recent meeting was focused on work requirements, community engagement requirements, and there are many inspired community partners who are looking at ways to support. And so, long story short, we're your partner at SNCAL Health, and our team is here to really focus on what's best for the residents of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo County, and we're at your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I was really impressed by the quarterly meeting and how everybody is pitching up to work with people receiving those benefits to make sure that they can keep those benefits. And that's going to be something that not only the providers and the organizations, but the community organizations, we all need to be on the same page and similar language and understanding, and that SNCAL's playing a leadership role, and that, I think, is terrific. Dr. Hamami, I had a question, and that is about the formation of a Health Access Task Force and whether that's something you're open to. I know you've worked a lot with the community, and one of the things I think of as a county job is to anticipate threats on the horizon. And you've done that, I think, exactly as you should, in developing plans and making sure that we're prepared for the worst case. And I think people now appreciate that. And I also appreciate, then, your wholehearted response in working with the community and trying to explain, because it's so easy, as Chair Capps said, to conflate these things and not understand, and different pieces of it require different approaches and solutions and responses. And so I think in working with the community, it's important to kind of disaggregate some of these issues. But I do think communication going forward is going to be really key. And I know that I learned a lot in this interim. And I know that I learned a lot in this interim, and I'm particularly grateful to the people who taught me about some of the legal issues. I find those really interesting and that I hope that this administration is lawful, which may be a big hope. But my question really goes back to the health access task force and what your thoughts are about that.
I don't think we're opposed to any idea of bringing people together who are passionate about the safety and the wellness of our community under one roof and exchanging ideas. Want to call it action committee, task force group, working group, whatever, the name isn't the issue. I think we have established our willingness to work together with everybody, and we are still committed to do so and moving forward. So, sure, why not? As long as it's going to produce something and a tangible solutions, not just ideas that no one can execute and it wouldn't just turn to be just a venting mechanism. I'm sorry to say that, but that's probably where we want to work towards the problem, not to just identify the problem.
Right. And my belief is that we've got, we're trying to assimilate a lot of change at once. I think we're going to have even more changes that we're going to have to adapt to. And so I think it's, we're creating the infrastructure here to communicate and, to the extent we can, collaborate. And so I think how we design that infrastructure is really important, and I don't know exactly how to do that. I know SenCal has had a lot of experience with that, maybe a facilitator, maybe we need somebody from the community organizations who could be kind of a bridge and help us think through and plan some of this, but I would really like to see us move in that direction.
And yes, I didn't want to commit yet because it is in planning, but I do confess that my predecessor gave me a lot of feedback into her efforts in working with the community. And in fact, we are looking at a trusted facilitator who can bring everybody around the table and at least introduce me to many of the partners that I still haven't established connections with. So, yes, we are working towards that. It is in the works, not final yet, so this is why I was a little bit hesitant to share the plans. But again, we are not opposed to working with anybody who can support us and also bring in new solutions or at least ideas to the table where we can explore.
And be good messengers to communicate to our clients, our patients.
Absolutely.
Any questions from the board, comments, deliberation? Supervisor Lavigneau?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm in between. Well, first off, I do want to apologize. I'm sorry that emotions do get heated in here, and I'm sorry, I kind of lashed out. But so, my apologies. I do, it's weird for me, it's a thing at, when I was the chair, I always feel like when people go over their time, I feel like people are trying to put, you know, I have a weird thing about time, but anyways, I'm sorry about that. But what I'm not sorry about is that I think you're right, Dr. Hamami, that we do need this committee, but we do have to go into it with eyes wide open. And that is, we do spend a lot of time identifying what the problems are. And I think this has to be an action team, not a commiseration team. And the thing I want people to take away from this hearing is that from day one, regardless of whether you agree with this or that or the other thing, the care of the patients has been the number one concern of this board and this department and this department head. So let's move forward with that, that our number one goal is to take care of folks. We have to do it in a responsible manner and realize that there are constraints on what we can and can't do. And so with that, I would support any type of a, whatever we call it, whatever we name it, let's put a huge acronym on it like Chair Capps likes, doesn't like. So, yeah, I'll support any motion that brings collaboration and people together and trying to figure out how to work through this mess.
Sure. Well, I'll speak. I'm really proud of this moment. So much thought and action and a lot of emotion has gone into where we are at this juncture from that article coming out in September, and a lot of anger, justifiably so, and October 7th meeting and putting the pause and to come to here. And it's also, as I mentioned, it's not as though we're sort of saying, okay, good, we won, you know, no layoffs today, and we fixed this, and all of our hardworking immigrants are going to get the healthcare they deserve. So it's, in a way, a bittersweet moment because we're sort of gearing ourselves up for some really big challenges. But I feel as though we're stronger now, as a, literally, you named the coalition, Premi, and I really appreciate that you named all those really important groups to our community because I've seen the work, I've seen the meetings. I only see from my vantage point, I don't see the day in, day out on the streets work that you do and the way you roll up your sleeves, but I'm so proud of the work, really very proud and touched. So here's what I know of why I'm so proud of where we are. Number one is, we're here in this situation because of the Trump administration taking aim at a vulnerable population, and we just heard the number, a trillion dollar savings on healthcare on the backs of the most vulnerable. And we're faced with the safety net. And my time here, the county is coming up to almost three years, and I'm realizing, you know, part of our job as a county, we see it with SNAP and food banks, we sort of figure out how to deal with the dysfunction of other governments, and, you know, we're the ones on the front lines sort of saying, okay, well, we've still got to take care of people. And I'm so proud of the way that we do. But it's this term, UIS, I'm glad that Director Owen said that. That's not our term. We don't label people like that. That's, these are our neighbors, our friends, our employers, our employees, our, these are a community that we respect profoundly. This board, just days after the last presidential election, passed a resolution unanimously in support of our immigrant community. So we have done so much, and we continue to stand by our immigrant community. So that's number one. Number two, our county took a pause because we needed, we were hearing, we needed to take a step back from this transition from happening, and we weren't quite ready, and I'm so proud that we did. And I'm proud, thank you from our county health for doing the due diligence, for listening to, now we have a formation of a task force. My only hesitation is that you have a lot on your plate, so I am one for not adding more processes, so I do just want to verbalize that. That being said, I also want to say that I did hear loud and clear from some really good experts that just, I don't want, when there is, if this injunction gets lifted, we don't just switch to a transition for these patients, that we have time to assess what is the litigation, what is the outcome of this case, what does that mean for these patients here, and that we have time as a board, as SenCal, as the board of the clinics to reassess what that means. So that's something I feel very strongly for. I don't need to put it in the motion, but I feel very strongly that we don't just have an automatic trigger for this plan that, as you said, is shovel-ready. As much as I'm happy it's shovel-ready, I don't want that to mean that we don't, we just move into transition.
That's a very good point, but may I just say, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
The memo came in July.
Yes.
If we wanted to do it tomorrow, then we would have acted on it in July. We gave ourselves till January because we wanted to make sure that we are not reacting immediately to things. So if the injunction is lifted, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but at least this is where we will need to confer with our people, confer with legal, confer with everybody else, to understand what is it that we need to do based on whatever the unknown is, that we still don't know what might happen. So while I respect what you are saying, we did not jump into it immediately because somebody in Washington said, start doing it.
I understand. I just want to voice that I will be interested in what the administration does. Again, these are hypotheticals, what the guidance might be, what that looks like, and have time for that information.
Absolutely.
And I also just will say again, it's been said up here, I know that you, with that plan, have put forward the patients, their health needs first and foremost, and I do believe that our coalition has come around to see that that was your intentions. And so I, and I also, I'll just end with applauding the coalition for really understanding that that was the intention of this plan and for understanding that we are trying to do the best thing, and we're all on the same side of really trying to put our immigrant healthcare needs first. That is the goal, and that is where we're marching forward. And I really appreciate all the hard work that went into this action, even though it's not really an action today. A lot of action went into getting to this non-action today, and I'm proud to make the motion. I don't think we need to formalize the task force. I would rather just give encouragement to our county health director.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hartman?
Thank you. As much as I'd like to blame everything on the Trump administration, I think it's really important that we be clear, at least I want to be clear about what I heard, that this department is facing a $17.4 million shortfall, and we have a structural deficit of $7.6 million that we've been funding from savings, but we don't have that going forward. And that, that's, we have to deal with that outside of this process.
Absolutely.
Then we have the $6.6 million that I think the state budget is partly in such bad shape because of some things that have happened at the federal level, tariff policies and other things have reduced revenues. But that $6.6 million really comes from state decisions, and so it's really only the $3.2 that we're expecting from HR1, which I refuse to call the big, beautiful bill. So my question is, the $6.6 million, what we see is a change where current people who don't have documentation can continue on their SenCal policies, but we will not be able to have new people get covered by SenCal. I think it's really important for everybody to understand, though, that the county does have a role. We have to make sure indigent people are cared for. That's part of the law. So what then is, what do we do for adults without their documentation who need care? Where are we starting to plan for that in our county?
That's a great question, and I hope I have a great answer for that. However, there are two scenarios. One, let's say we are no longer dealing with an injunction or a lift of the injunction or a lawsuit or whatever. So let's go back before that infamous HHS memo. We still see and are still going to continue to see uninsured people. That is what we do. This is what our clinics are, regardless. What added complexity to this is there was a designation for what I would call a double jeopardy, a UIS and uninsured. So if there is no limitations on who we can serve, then we will continue to serve everybody regardless of what financial burden that is going to put on us. However, realistically, we have to also understand the capacity of what we can do and what cannot do. I would love to buy a house in Santa Barbara. Unfortunately, I haven't been able because I have limited resources. I cannot go and buy a mansion in Montecito, and the same thing should apply to whatever we can do. If we want to still serve the 75%, the 80%, the 90%, then we cannot jeopardize throwing away the 100%. And this is where, in our planning, in our reassessment of all these changes, the amount of people that are going to be uninsured that we are going to still serve for free, we will not turn anybody away. The amount of people that are now underinsured, that means we used to get $400, now we're going to get $80. That is still, we're not going to turn them away. They will not receive any less quality healthcare than anybody else. But to what extent can we still operate? As you said, how can we still pay our physicians and our MAs and our nurses? How can we still pay utilities? How can we still keep our five centers open? This is what we need to figure out.
Right. And thank you, because I think that's something we need to understand and we need the public to understand. We don't have unlimited resources. We do cover indigent people who are not insured, underinsured, but maybe not with the same range of services.
And we've been fortunate that we had the fund balance, but the fund balance is, does not self-generate. It's a saving account like anybody who knows Budgeting 101. Tap into your saving account year after year, that saving account is going to be reduced to zero where you are forced now to not afford the luxuries that we kind of managed to navigate through.
Supervisor Nelson?
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, this discussion, I think, has been a really healthy one. You know, one of the things I think about this is about, you know, what are other states doing? Because, you know, the California model was different than most other states, and you came from a state that, I don't know how Michigan model was, but, you know, those with UIS classifications in other states are receiving services, but just through a different means. And I think California, we've gone off on a different route for quite some time. I think we're going to be a little bit more normalization, but, you know, in those other states, those with unsatisfactory immigration status have been receiving services. So there is a pathway, you know, from California to Alabama to, you know, New York, right? But I think there's some, and obviously there's some growing pains because we built an infrastructure based on a different set of rules, and now we're just normalizations. So maybe speak to that.
It is, it is. And also the volume of, I think, different demographics. So I know Michigan enough because I've spent a lot of time there. I operated FQHCs in Michigan. Michigan does not provide Medicaid for anybody who does not have a satisfactory immigration status.
Right.
So that is not an issue. So now we get into what does that memo goes into effect if people, so everybody that is a UIS has no insurance. So those would be still the ones that walk through the door, don't ask, don't tell, we are going to treat you regardless whether you have insurance or not. So the question that many states are facing, if this goes into effect, if there is a ruling, do you start asking for documentation or do you not? And then to add more complexity, as I understand it, I'm not a lawyer, but as I understand it, that nonprofits are different than county governments. Many people said, why are we the only one in California? Well, we're the only one because there are only five like us in California. There are 17 counties that operate their FQHCs, but they have them under a health system, a hospital system and all that. In our situation, there are only five counties that are exactly like us. So it's not that we're breaking away and being the first and all that. These are all things that we need to look into and weigh it from all different angles and from all different aspects, and at the end of the day, take a decision that is going, if there is damage, it will minimize the damage and not put us completely at risk.
Thank you, thank you, Mohammed. The other point I just wanted to make, and, you know, I saw the outreach that groups that you were talking about there, but I do see missing from there is our ag employers. You know, that's, I've not seen that on there, and that's the entities who work with many of these people that are UIS clients on a regular basis that have the trusted relationships and are often providing actually some of this healthcare to their employees already outside of the system of care that we have. And so I just think there's a real opportunity there to do some outreach, like there has been done through social services with our Farmworker Resource Center, to build some stronger relationships. You know, I understand some of the advocates that are in the room, but there is a little bit of a different strategy that could be implemented to make sure that we're reaching the broadest amount of people in our community as possible.
Thank you very much. Yes, I completely agree.
Supervisor Hartman?
Supervisor Nelson, I'm so glad you mentioned that because when we did our forum, we learned, I think it's if you hire more than 10 farmworker employees... learned, I think it's if you hire more than 10 farmworker employees, you have to provide insurance. But very few take people up on it because it is an additional cost and if they don't have to spend it. So maybe they, that is a really important partner to bring in as we begin to think about how are we going to pay for care and make sure people get care.
And I would just comment that there are many provider, employers that offer that insurance. A lot of employees don't take it, of course, because it's expensive. A lot of people in the county don't take the insurance because it's expensive. But they do then provide clinics. I think the same P.A. that serves county employees actually serves some of our farms here in the Santa Barbara Valley. So I mean, we're, it's already happening out there. And so, you know, trying to leverage that and trying to create pathways for some of our larger employers and larger ag labor contractors is probably a relationship worth building to make sure we maximize that.
C.M. Yesato. Supervisors, I think as you're getting close to concluding this hearing, I just want to remind you, so next month, we're planning to come back on our forecast, our budget forecast. And some of the questions you're raising are questions that are the front of our minds and our departments. Our budget director is sitting over in the corner. But just, I want to put some more of the information in your head, and that is the deficit that Director Hamidi pointed out, $17 million projected for next year. That's as if we continue to provide the services we do. What he didn't say is there's an additional money that's going to be adding to that deficit, because he's just saying what he's going to lose because of some of the changes from state and federal changes. In addition to that, the county is responsible to filling, figuring out how are we going to provide indigent care. That number isn't on there, and that's a very large number. So I just want to keep in mind, it's not just that. That's how much they would just be losing, but in addition, there's going to be more money that we're going to have to find because we're responsible still for providing that care. So I think the partnerships we talked about, all the things that SNCAL is doing to ensure, helping people ensure they continue to get their Med-Cal, all that, all that will be important as we go into the next year, and we'll have a fuller discussion in a month. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Supervisor Harmon.
I'd be willing to make the motion, A through C on today's staff report, and also that the board endorses the creation of a Health Access Task Force.
Okay, and I'll second that motion.
Madam Chair and members of the board. So my recommendation on the task force, I'm not sure exactly how we want to structure it, and my concern is that we might be boxing ourselves in if the board directs or if it endorses creating it versus having the department create something and that gives the department more flexibility too. So that would be my recommendation is to not include that in the motion.
Okay, then it goes with direction or, I mean, you heard, there's, there's support for it. It's already in the process. It's a good idea.
We committed to it, so.
Okay, so just A through, A through C. Okay, with motion and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I was the second. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, we will take, how about 30 minutes for folks for our last item?
Do you mind?
Okay.
Food's here.
So we will be back around 1:30, 1:35?
Okay, we are back and just finishing up our last departmental item, which is departmental item. Oh, we have two more, excuse me. Departmental item number three, Madam Clerk.
Chair Capps and members of the board, we-- departmental item number three is from the Social Services Department. It is adhering to consider recommendations regarding the Department of Social Services, DSS, fiscal year 2025 through 2026 budget update and rebalancing plan, and there is a fourth this vote required on this item.
Good afternoon, Chair Capps and supervisors. Daniel Nielsen, your Department Director for the Department of Social Services. Rachel Lippman, our Chief Financial and Administrative Officer, will be making the presentation today.
Good afternoon, Chair Capps, members of the board. On October 7th, we came to your board to present a plan to bring our expenditures in line with revenues as we are projecting a $7.4 million gap between our ongoing revenue sources and our ongoing costs in the current year. Our budget was adopted before we had final information about our realignment revenue levels and with additional months of information about some of our large cost drivers. We saw that we would not be able to complete this year in balance without taking major cost-cutting measures. We proposed to your board that we eliminate funding for all vacant positions, of which we had 56 last month, and we now have 58. We also propose that we move forward with a layoff plan to reduce our workforce by 65 filled positions. Your board directed us to work with the County Executive Office to come up with strategies to fund these 65 positions through the end of this fiscal year. We've returned to you today with an update on cost-reduction strategies, a summary of the budget revision we've submitted for your approval, as well as a brief update on our current financial projections and look ahead to next year. Over the past month, we've been working with the CEO's office and Human Resources Department to solve our budget gap. With CEO, we've identified potential opportunities for several DSS staff to shift from their current responsibilities into roles working with justice-involved individuals that have dedicated funding sources. The first opportunity is providing Medi-Cal eligibility and enrollment services supported by CalAim Path 2 funds. The second opportunity is to work on re-entry care management services for individuals transitioning out of our jails, funded by Community Corrections Partnership and General Funds. Details of these opportunities are still being worked out, and there's no estimated amount of revenue at this time. However, we would expect two to four DSS employees to potentially shift responsibilities into these roles with alternate funding sources. And in collaboration with HR, we met with SEIU Local 620 and 721 representatives several times to discuss potential concessions to save money in the current year. And HR and the unions have reached tentative agreements, which if ratified by union membership could save an estimated $250,000 in local funds over the course of 12 months, a portion of which would be realized in the current fiscal year. And in addition to these two strategies, DSS will also continue to hold vacancies that arise in order to generate cost savings. We're also reviewing any requests to spend with a critical eye and incurring costs only when deemed absolutely necessary from an operational perspective. The budget revision we have brought forward today will adjust our revenues and expenditures in line with projections that we presented to you on October 7th. There are many ups and downs in the budget revision, but the six main adjustments are summarized on this slide. The dollar amounts reflect only the local funding side of things, although most of these items also have state and/or federal funding impacts. Numbers in green benefit our bottom line, and numbers in red negatively impact our budget. We will maintain funding for all filled positions and reduce funding for all vacant positions, and we will make the adjustment to salary savings to reflect our very low attrition rate. Realignment revenues will be reduced by $1.5 million to reflect updated state projections. And cash assistance payments in the foster care and adoptions programs have seen significant growth in the past couple of years, and we're adjusting the expected level of spending up by $1.3 million in local funds. We are reducing over $1 million in contracted supportive services for child welfare services programs, and most of these contract eliminations or reductions have already been put into place. Finally, the budget revision will reduce the one-time draws on revenue to reflect funds used in fiscal year '24, '25 to balance at year end. And although we are pursuing cost-reduction measures as enumerated on the last slide, we've also built in a $2.3 million transfer from general county programs, which will be drawn upon at the end of this fiscal year to the extent needed to balance our budget if the other measures are insufficient to bring expenditures in line with available revenues. And since last month's hearing, we have updated our revenue and expenditure projections, and unfortunately, are anticipating an additional half-million-dollar gap in the current year. However, we've seen how there's much uncertainty in both our funding sources as well as certain spending areas, such as categorical aid, which are outside our direct control, so we will continue to monitor our budget throughout the year and refine our projections on a monthly basis. We will work closely with CEO and may return later in the year if we determine it would be prudent to adjust our budget based on cost-reduction measures and updated projections. As we look towards next fiscal year, things look quite bleak. The three factors listed on this slide will create a gap of over $10 million to start next fiscal year. As we discussed at last month's hearing, the federal change in the cost-sharing ratio for the administration of the CalFresh program will increase our share of costs from the current 15% to 22.5%, resulting in an annual increase of $2.6 million in our general fund contribution directed towards this program. We will remove the $2.8 million in one-time funding allocated by the board in the current year's budget, which is funding the increasing categorical aid costs. And finally, the annualized cost of the 65 filled positions that had been proposed for elimination is $4.8 million. As we begin developing next year's budget next month, we will work on cost-reduction strategies. Because of the significant cost reductions we've already incorporated into the current year budget, as well as the budget adjustment before you today, we anticipate we won't have many places to look to further cut costs other than staffing. Because of this, we expect to be before you at the April budget workshops with a proposal for significant reductions to positions. And these are the three recommended actions before you today. That concludes our presentation. We're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions, excuse me, at this time from the board? Supervisor Nelson?
Is there public comment first?
We can, yeah, we can move to public comment first.
Chair Capps and members of the board, we have four requests to speak on this item. We are going to begin here in Santa Maria with Leo DeCassis, to be followed by Laura Robinson. Leo?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair again and Board Supervisors. I just wanted to speak, you know, about this bleak, dark situation that we're currently facing ourselves in. Again, we're here today representing the hard-working members here at the Department of Social Services. On behalf of our members and the community, we want to express the gratitude for staff recommendation that includes zero layoffs today. We appreciate the collaboration between county leadership, human resources, the department as labor partners to protect these jobs now. However, we must acknowledge, you know, the $10 million deficit and our fear for loss, job loss, and services to the community. Now, we're deeply concerned by this. The decision to cut the vacancies today already puts a strain on the workers now going into next year. You know, layoffs not only harm employees, but also reduce the county's ability to, you know, draw down those state funds. Therefore, the county will be, you know, leaving resources on the table, taking resources out of our communities. Again, you know, there's, it's hard to say what the answer is, but, you know, we urge county leadership to work with us and to work to explore every possible avenue to, you know, avoid these negative outcomes that we foresee in the future. Thanks.
We will now go to Laura Robinson, to be followed by Karen Howenstein. Laura?
Hello again, Laura Robinson, Executive Director of SEIU Local 620. This one's harder for me. You know, over the past few weeks, I have been working with my HR counterparts to come to some sort of concession deal that might get us anywhere near where we need to be and just really show you that we are willing to work with you collaboratively. But at the end of the day, that $250,000 isn't the actual money out of my members' pockets. It's substantially more. That's just the portion that can go towards the general fund. So we're actually, I want that to be clear, we're actually giving a lot more money back. It just can't be allocated to save these jobs. So at that point, $250,000 is a drop in the bucket of the general fund. You had a $14.7 million surplus last year. You're already picking up the excess of the DSS deficit, and, you know, I'm here to ask once again that, just pick that up, especially if we're hearing, as the board letter clearly outlines, that, okay, we're going to come back in eight months and lay these people off anyways, but so now we're going to ask them to take a 5% pay cut in the meantime when they're desperately going to need it in eight months, when they're going to be filing for unemployment? It just doesn't feel right. So the ask is clear. Pick up that little $250,000 that we've agreed to concede to you. You know, let's get to the new fiscal year. Let's discuss the economic issues in a holistic sense, you know, county-wide, and let's include everything. And I mean, you know, revenue enhancements, I mean, fee realignments, yes, I mean concessions. Let's work again as labor partners with the county. Our goal is never to bankrupt you guys, and let's do it then. Let's, let's take a break over the next, you know, seven months and work through the fiscal, you know, the April fiscal budget season, and let's do it together, and let's fix it then. So again, my ask is clear. Pick up the whole DSS deficit, and let's address it more holistically moving forward. Thank you.
And I don't see Karen with us. I believe she's left. So we will now go to our final speaker, Yuri Gomez. Yuri?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Yuri Gomez. I'm a social worker supervisor with Child Welfare Services, and thank you for having us and having this conversation with us. I want to say thank you for hearing us. I think that's the sentiment we got from our members. They have felt heard over the last couple of weeks, months. The struggles that we're going through within our department are shared not just by the members, the community, but our leadership as well. So thank you for working with us, for listening, making the time and the space so we can have these conversations. Like Laura mentioned, with these concessions our members are making, you know, it also shows time and time again all the things our members are willing to give up. They give up time with their families to work after hours. They give up some of their well-earned and needed merit increases. But we know the challenges that we would face if more positions were eliminated. So also, we want to continue to have these conversations. We know it's not going to be an easy solution, but as Supervisor Labanino very well articulated last time, I think this is an issue that has to be looked at strategically as a county issue. We're not self-sufficient, even though that's our motto. We want people to be self-sufficient, safe. We can't do that alone within our department, and we do need the county's support so that we can work together to carry our vulnerable population and continue to provide those services that are essential. So thank you again, and we look forward to collaborating. And I just want to, again, emphasize our members who are willing to give up from their own pockets that very needed increment that would get their families through really hard times. So thank you.
And that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, questions from the board? Yeah, of course. CEO Miosato.
Thank you, Chair Capps. I just want to say thank you to our unions. I want to thank you to SEIU 620, and I know 721 is still in process, but thank you for stepping up and saying we want to help solve the problem as well. So we really appreciate that. And I want actually Carlos Silva, just to, so that the public is clear, what is the concession that's been bargained and that we have, for which we have a TA?
Sure. Thank you. Chair Capps, members of the board. First of all, I do want to start by mirroring what CEO Miosato said and commend the unions for stepping up and likewise working collaboratively with us to show that they're willing to do what they could to save the jobs of these employees. As far as the concessions go that we've agreed upon, we did purposely try to limit the impacts to the greatest extent possible, given that this may be just the first drop in the bucket and not digging too far into that options for concessions in the future. And so what we put forth and we've agreed upon is a six-month delay in merit eligibility. Eligibility for merit, or merits are not automatic according to civil service rules. They must be first affirmed by the department head and then verified by a written employee performance evaluation of satisfactory or better. But that said, by delaying the merit eligibility, you are not effectively taking any money out of their pockets at this time, and that was part of the reason we felt that that was a reasonable ask at this time to show the commitment. What it does do, though, is it simply delays the point or the point at which they'd be eligible to then receive a potential 5% increase. So it simply delays the occurrence, the incurrence of further cost for a period of time, generates one-time savings in the process. savings in the process. Besides that, it doesn't have any effect on agreed-upon COLAs that are already in the contract, inequities that are in the contract, doesn't have any effect on the employee's ability to promote. And more importantly, it keeps, it does not impact services to the county and to the, or the services provided by the county to the clients. It keeps those things in place as long as possible. So for those reasons, we felt that it was a reasonable concession ask.
And just within the department, correct?
Oh, yes, and simply limiting it to the department. We did initially discuss the possibility of concessions countywide. Unfortunately, though, that would have had impacts on other departments' operations and employees in ways that they wouldn't have been able to recruit certain special revenues from that, so it would have been even greater impact upon them. And those monies couldn't have been forwarded towards those departments, a great portion of them, the special revenue portions, to help with the budget gap in any case. Thank you.
Supervisor Labanino?
Thank you. Just have a question about that. So what's going to change between, I mean, when we look at, when we look at this holistically, obviously, we can't fix this department or public health, just inside public health and social services. So if those concessions that you're talking about that weren't really going to do us any good this time around, how are they going to be able to do us, how is it going to be more effective next time?
Will those concessions at least remain as options for those other departments to utilize in saving their positions in the future?
So this is only inside social services, and it's only people delaying a merit eligibility for six months, and that gives us $250,000?
It stops the occurrence of up to $250,000 over the course of calendar year 2026. Those costs will be incurred at some point, it just delays them. So you'll save those one-time funds to help, that can be contributed towards closing the gap.
Supervisor Nelson?
Yes, thank you, Chair Capps. Getting back to the presentation for a moment. And this year's tally talks about the attrition not being as much as previously anticipated. And just help me a little bit understand, I mean, how does, how much does attrition go into your budgeting when you guys are looking at that? I mean, you guys are assuming every year you're going to have a certain amount of people leave, so you guys are going to have salary savings, and, and so I just need to understand that a little bit better, especially as we look into the future and as we don't fill positions, right? You know, we're going to, there's a math going on there that I'm just trying to get my brain around.
Right. Supervisor Nelson through the chair. So every department does budget some level of salary savings, which is essentially a negative number in the salaries and benefits category, and that accounts for the level of attrition that you anticipate seeing during the year. If departments didn't budget that and we budgeted the full amount, then every time we had a vacancy, we would essentially be kind of holding money there without having anybody doing the work. So by budgeting a level of salary savings for natural attrition, it allows departments to have a little bit of a better staffing level and that reflects reality. And so we have historically had quite high attrition rates, but this year, they've really come down, and we just have not seen the level that we've seen over the past few years. And we therefore decided that it would be responsible to bring, you know, reduce that level of salary savings that we had anticipated in the adopted budget to bring it down now. And we are closely tracking to that with every pay period.
And that goes to my question about when we started looking at next year's budget, you know, as we're not hiring back positions, how does that, I mean, the math on that changes a little bit. We have these 65 positions that potentially are up for, you know, potentially laying employees off, but we're going to have attrition, and it seems like the math would be a little bit different if we're not anticipating rehiring.
Supervisor Nelson through the chair, you're absolutely right. Our current updated salary savings percentage that we're using in our updated budget for the current year, I believe, is at 5.2%. Our department has never experienced anything less than 8% historically, and that 5.2 is a representation of our recognition that we are going to have lower turnover moving forward because of not, not doing the hiring. So we're monitoring it. We're doing well so far in the current fiscal year to that new figure in terms of tracking to that. But when we create our budget for '26, '27, we might actually lower it even further. But it is significantly lower than it ever has been because of the lack of hiring we've been doing.
But then the lack of hiring also potentially helps with those 65 positions come next year? So we actually have the actual natural attrition instead of actually laying off workers?
Well, Supervisor Nelson, so anything that we overachieve in the current year above that 5.2% in terms of natural attrition then helps us be better positioned for the next year. But we still have to have a certain level of natural attrition in the current year to meet that 5.2% target.
So anything above the 5.2% will become then
Helpful.
vacant unfilled positions?
Right. That would help us be better positioned for headed into the next year.
I think I'm tracking that a little bit better now. And I guess this is my opportunity to talk about when you guys come back next year, or come back in April to have a conversation. You know, I know we always focus on general fund dollars. You guys also have realignment dollars that are somewhat flexible. So, I mean, you know, I know you guys could kind of get to pick and choose. They have to be spent within social services, they can't be taken out and spent on roads, but they'd go into different pots within the social services umbrella. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, both realignments, '91 realignment and '21 realignment, have a certain amount of flexibility. The greatest flexibility is within 1991 realignment. It's less flexible within '21 realignment. And so when we're crafting our budget, we will be focused, as we always have been, on minimizing our use of general fund and the maximization of other revenues. In two prior fiscal years, over the course of the past 10 or 11 years, in years where we've actually received more realignment than we had budgeted, in one year, the CEO's office withheld one quarter's worth of the planned general fund for our department, and in a different year, they withheld one month's worth. And so there's always this sort of relationship back and forth of not using any more general fund than needed. Unfortunately, you know, we're not living in that world right now as far as having excess realignment to help that out. But historically, the CEO's office and the department have worked very closely together to use as little general fund as necessary.
Sure, but also there are, there are things that are funded with realignment dollars that are mays, not shals, right?
The mays are in the area, like the contracts that Rachel just referred to that we've reduced in the current year. You know, that approximate million dollars worth of contracts was mays, that they remain mays up until the point at some court judge tells us that you shall, with this family, provide that service, right? So, so, you know, we're operating appropriately at the current time, but the future could change in terms of what we're mandated to do in particular cases or situations. But as we've described in the past, you know, with our categorical aid and the cost of foster care placements and adoptions assistance, we have a lot of very high-cost things happening that are totally out of our control, that in the past fiscal year, part of what our problem was, was that we didn't recognize early enough on that our categorical aid was growing drastically, and money was being shifted to pay for that without full transparency internally until partway through the year, that it was drawing money away from other things that were also essential, like, you know, funding the foster care match, or the, excuse me, the SNAP, the CalFresh match. And so, you know, we, you know, have control internally during the course of the year and making some adjustments, but when the costs skyrocket like they did the last fiscal year, we end up with just basically essential costs and not enough money to cover them.
I guess that's what I'm trying to delineate and, you know, careful of the way I'm walking through this, but, you know, really just making sure that we prioritize the essentials. And then there are going to be some things that are not essential. I mean, they're nice to haves, not have to haves, and I think that those, I'd be really interested to see what that looks like in next year's budget for your department.
Supervisor Nelson, when we come back in April, everything that anybody would possibly consider nice to have will be on the list of stuff that we can no longer afford. Unfortunately, there will also be stuff that the department considers must haves that will also be on that list.
And I think that's where, you know, I'll speak for myself as a board member, you know, that's where I, I'm looking to fund those things, not necessarily looking to keep what we do now completely funded and topped up. You know, I'm willing to mine our general fund to a certain extent, to things that are essential, that are things that are like public safety, child welfare, but I need to be, have the confidence that everywhere else, those things have already been eliminated through that budget for my support there. And you might be able to get three other votes elsewhere, other places. I'm just going to give you, you know, a key to my support on those things, is I really need to make sure that I feel like you guys have done that as far as possible, because we have a lot of things that are essential that are funded by general funds that we don't have enough general fund dollars to either. So we have to make some decisions, and there's going to be some things that are unfunded or underfunded throughout the county organization, not just within your department. So just, you know, this board's going out on a limb to do something that's not normal. So I'm just really stressing how much I need you guys to be, you know, sharpening those pencils and looking at those places and, and, you know, making sure that it makes it through that level of scrutiny is what I'm hoping for.
And I assure you, first of all, I want to say my appreciation for your clarity on that, and I assure you that in April, you will have that clarity from us on all those things. We have been actively doing that for the past year, and, and so we're very, we're very well capable of very quickly addressing, and we'll make sure our presentation includes that level of clarity for you to see. But I appreciate you sharing your mindset at this stage.
Thank you.
Supervisor Herman?
Yeah, I just had a question about the concession from the union. So there's a six-month voluntary delay in eligibility, so somebody might have, for a merit increase, is that correct? Yeah.
Supervisor Herman through the chair. How about that? So anyways, Supervisor Herman through the chair. Yes, it would be a delay of six months for their eligibility. So every employee becomes eligible for a merit, assuming they're not at top step, at the first of whatever their anniversary month is. So for instance, if somebody had an anniversary month in January 1st, then it would simply delay their eligibility for that merit until July.
July.
Correct.
But then they also may lose their job. Is that correct? I mean, we're going to have, and so they've foregone not just that, but they're at a lower rate when they go for unemployment, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah.
But keep in mind that unemployment benefits are based on a lookback, a quarterly lookback. So there's a good chance they may not have incurred those additional benefits in enough time to actually have it benefit their unemployment.
Okay. If I may, just supervisors, just for the public, no one's been laid off yet. The department is just looking at how to balance their budget come the July 1 fiscal year. And at the time, we can talk about what kind of parameters would be, benefits, et cetera, if we need to do those things. So I would just say, hold, hold those thoughts until and if we get to that point.
Supervisor Labanino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So mine is, and I don't know how much we can talk about in open session, but I guess Rachel will shut me down if I, if I step out of line, get ready. No, so strategy-wise, you know, and I appreciate the unions, what they gave, but from my position, I look at it like, you're only going to be able to go to that well so many times. And so I don't want the mental perception of our employees to be, I gave, okay? Because we're definitely going next year, there's going to be a big ask, right? I mean, I'm just looking at what we're seeing, that's just the two departments we're talking about now. And we've got, how many, 20-something? So I don't know any of them that are running a surplus. So there's going to be some significant changes that are going to happen next year. So the question is, strategy-wise, is it, is it smart to go to the employees at this point for a $250,000 minor Band-Aid, but they feel like they already did something? And then we're going to go back in April and say, okay, here's our strategy, we're going to need concessions, and we need huge concessions. And I don't want the response to be, or the feeling among some that are like, well, we already, we already did one. I'm just trying to figure out the strategy is, it seems, it seems more of a strategy to me to say, I mean, we're already covering, we're covering a lot. So for $250,000, do we really want to use one of those chits?
Supervisor, I think that's a labor strategy more than a legal issue for county council.
Right.
And I would, I would just say we've had discussions about labor strategy, and we've presented what we thought was important. And I think overall, our unions are led by thoughtful, skilled folks. They're good labor negotiators, they've worked with our labor negotiators. I think they understand the situation. I know we've negotiated in good faith, and no one knows what the future will hold. We are forecasting a deficit that's greater than what you've seen today. And really, the issue is, what are we going to do with labor? What are we going to do with our departments? What are we going to do with the community? There's all these questions involved about a larger strategy, and we hope to talk to you more about that. As far as, is it a smart labor strategy? I guess this is a question you're asking that depends on who you ask. I think it's important for employees in DSS who are, who have voted on this as well, as far as SEIU, to say, we want to help our own department. I think that's admirable, and I applaud them for that. I applaud the union for bringing it up and for negotiating with us in good faith. Are we saying to the union, this is, that's all you have to do? No, we're not saying that yet, but we don't know what that next step is. We've been forecasting, we haven't instructed Carlos to go out and start doing more concessions for what's about to come. We're trying to figure out what is a better strategy for us all. One of your colleagues that used to be on the board said, yeah, we can tighten up expenses, but what we have is a revenue problem, not necessarily an expense problem, because we can't control our expenses. And so we will have to come up what is a strategy overall for everything that we're doing. And I would just suggest, for this particular piece, if the board feels like, well, even though we received direction to negotiate this, we negotiated in good faith, the unions negotiated in good faith, if we're saying we don't want to give a false impression to our employees, I think, I think they know that. We're not sure what the future is going to hold. We may ask for more in the coming months as we approach the budget. We just don't know yet, and we haven't really defined that labor strategy yet, because we're trying to figure out what is the larger strategy. I know we've, we've said that there, if we continue on this line of budget cuts, we are going to have to do more concession bargaining. But as far as this strategy goes, all I can say is we've negotiated, I think it's important for the employees to feel they've been part of the solution, and we want to continue to have them part of the solution, and we want to continue to work with them collaboratively. Because then again, no one, no one in this room wants to lay off employees. Honestly, nobody does. But we have to, by law, balance our budget. This is a state-funded program. That's why we haven't had these issues too much in the past, because the state has either had more revenue or less revenue, and we figured it out, but this is a unique situation, a unique time.
Thank you. Ready to? Go forward.
I got, I guess I got one more question.
Sure.
So the extra half a million dollars, we're not funding that yet, right? I just want to clarify that. So that's, that's a, it's on the radar, might be something that we have to deal with come at the end of the fiscal year, and you're just kind of giving us a heads up. It's not anything you're asking for more general fund allocation at this point?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I had that right on my head. So I guess, I guess I'll be ready to move forward. Staff recommendation, if, once, if all the rest of the questions and comments are...
Yeah, I mean, I, it's not a question. I just wanted to also echo the thanks to the union for really participating in such a challenging situation, and also to Ms. Robinson for your comments in the previous agenda item as well, and the collaborative nature of this engagement. And also to the department, I mean, just to acknowledge the last few weeks of CalFresh benefits, I mean, the onslaughts just keep coming. So it must be really hard on everybody, and not to mention recipients, to have to rely on food bank and others and family members, et cetera. So Supervisor Nelson, did you want to make motion?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead. My motion would be to adopt staff recommendations A, B, and C.
And I will second, and just want to thank SEIU for all the hard work working with the county. I'm optimistic, I think everything will be all right, but prove me wrong, so.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I'm going to help, by the way.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that.
Sorry.
So then we have, should we do four to one?
Four to one.
Yeah, four to one. We got that.
Thank you.
One more item.
One more item. Yeah.
Chair Capes and members of the board, Departmental Item Number Four is from the County Executive Office. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding adjustments to the other post-employment benefits, OPEB funding policy.
Good afternoon, Chair Capes and members of the board. I'm here to discuss the recommended adjustment to our post-employment benefits, or OPEB funding policy. First, just a little background on OPEB. The purpose of our OPEB plan is to provide a healthcare benefit to retired employees of the county and their eligible dependents. The plan provides an insurance premium subsidy to retired employees based upon their years of service and the retired employee's elected health insurance provider. The county currently contributes 4% of payroll costs to pay for the yearly benefits to these retirees and to put funding towards projected future costs of the plan. That contribution will be close to $20 million in the current fiscal year. Employees do not make contributions towards the OPEB plan, the county bears the full cost. To limit the future liability of the plan, the county began gradually closing the OPEB plan to new employees, beginning in 2012 with the new general employees, with new general plan employees. And by 2018, the OPEB plan was closed to all new employees. How is OPEB funded? Prior to the formal policy adoption, the county utilized a pay-as-you-go methodology for the OPEB plan, paying in what was anticipated to be withdrawn by recipients each year. This contribution equaled about 3% of pensionable payroll at that time, but did nothing to address the large unfunded liability in the plan. In 2016, the board formally adopted a funding policy setting the rate at 4% of pensionable payroll, with the aim of reducing the long-term liability and achieving a fully funded plan by 2034. The funding plan has been more successful than anticipated, and as of June 30, 2024, the plan had a funded ratio of 60%. And at the current 4% rate, the plan is anticipated to be fully funded by 2027, well before the original target of 2034. This is a look at OPEB liabilities and assets and the funded ratio from our most recent actuarial report as of June 30, 2024, and 10 years before that, June 30, 2014, just before the 4% funding plan was put into place. We can see the total actuarial liability of the plan was $178.5 million and is now $125.5 million as a result of closing the plans in the previous years. As no new entrants come in, the liability will continue to decline over time. In 2014, there was only $3.2 million in assets in the plan, because up until this point, the county was using pay-as-you-go to cover just the amount going out the door each year and not building up assets towards the future liability. The difference between the total actuarial liability and the value of the assets in the plan is the unfunded liability, which was $175.3 million in 2014. This meant the plan had a funded ratio of only 1.8%. As we flash forward to 2024, and the liability has come down to over $50 million, come down by over $50 million, and the assets have risen by over $70 million. This means the unfunded liability has dropped to $51 million with a funded ratio of about 60%. SB SARS Actuary will likely be publishing their next OPEB report soon for the year ending June 30, 2025. I expect we'll see this position improve further as the investments achieve greater returns than the assumed rate, and the county contributed around another $18 million. The CEO's recommendation, given the plan's positive position and the other fiscal needs that the county is currently grappling with, is to adjust the funded, funding policy from 4% of payroll to 1.5% effective January 1, 2026. This adjustment will create one-time salary savings for departments in the current fiscal year and reduce ongoing salary and benefit costs in the upcoming '26-'27 budget. This change will help the county partially address forecasted operating budget deficits while continuing to responsibly fund the long-term liability in this plan and achieve full funding by the original target date of 2034. The change does not impact benefits for any of the eligible employees, it is solely a change to the county's funding policy. This table shows the projected savings compared to budget in the current year if we move to a 1.5% policy for the last six months of this fiscal year. 1.9 million savings in the general fund and 4.5 million in other funds, a total payment of 13.2 million on the year instead of 19.6. Annualized as ongoing savings in fiscal year '26-'27, we would expect $4.2 million savings in the general fund and $8.6 million in other funds, a total payment of 7.6 million instead of the estimated 20.4 million if we stayed at 4%. So just to reiterate, key takeaways, this recommendation adjusts the county's contribution rate from 4% to 1.5% of payroll effective January 1, 2026. It will create salary savings in departments in the current year and reduce ongoing salary and benefit costs in all departments in '26-'27. And it will still allow us to achieve a fully funded plan by the original target of 2034, barring any unforeseen investment losses. The CEO will continue monitoring the progress of this plan in the years ahead and may revisit the funding policy again in coming years. And again, nothing proposed here will impact benefits to eligible employees. Our recommended actions are to adopt the resolution that updates the funding policy to 1.5% and determine this action is not a project under CEQA.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clonaty. Questions from the board? Supervisor Nelson.
Yes, thank you. I've got a couple of questions. So previously, 3% of payroll kept us going, right? When we were 0% funded?
When they were doing the, Supervisor Nelson through the chair, when they're doing the pay-as-you-go 10-plus years ago, that amount at that time, I think was eight or nine million dollars a year. At that time equaled about 3% of payroll. If they kept doing that, the payments are still around eight or nine million dollars a year, it would be, it would be much less, because it wasn't pegged at 3%. It was just pay-as-you-go. Payroll's gotten a lot bigger.
So yeah, and that makes sense, but I'm kind of concerned about the 1.5, right? So 1.5, is that at least covering what we're going to be paying out in benefits?
So Supervisor Nelson through the chair, the, I believe what's currently going out, that eight or nine million dollars going out the door, the 1.5 alone, if that generates a seven or eight million dollars, it doesn't cover that, but the assets in the plan generate investment returns and that will still continue keeping it above, it should be well above the tread water indicator.
Of, what's our tread water indicator?
That's, that's what, that's a lower amount that the actuary calculates. If we paid in that amount, it prevents the unfunded liability from getting larger.
Right.
But it's not paying down the unfunded liability, so we're paying more than that now. And we'll continue, the 1.5% continues paying that higher amount.
So, but we're assuming that we're going to get above the rate of return to be able to continue to do that if we're not paying at least what we're paying now?
The, I believe it's at 7%. The assumed rate of return is at 7%. So it assumes that they continue earning that 7%, much like the pension plan, they have to adopt some kind of assumption and that is built into, built into these numbers.
All right, so if we were to kept the 4%, we'd have this fully, 100% funded by 2027. Have you guys done some modeling on what 1.5% does? Does that get us funded by the 2030?
So Supervisor Nelson through the chair, we, we worked with SB SARS Actuary earlier this year. They looked at a 2% number for us, and that was getting us by 2029, fully funded by 2029. When we are looking at the 2034 date, we asked them if we went down to 1.5 or even 1%. The timing of everything they're working on to get their actuary studies and things done for their rates they need to adopt next month, they didn't have the time to work with us and produce an actuary report that looked at those lower amounts. But I've spoken with them, I've been talking to Greg Levin, he's comfortable having the 2034 number in there still as a, as a reasonable target, that he doesn't, he didn't feel that there was any risk of missing that 2034, assuming the, you know, assumption returns maintain at 7%.
And 2034 is just a goal, really, right, for the county?
Correct. It was the goal set when the funding policy was put in place in 2016.
So I was asking those questions just for my benefit, but you know, I think this is really an opportunity for a little bit of a celebration and of just really the hard work that Budget Staff and Past Boards have put into this funding strategy. You know, we, just like a lot of our other pension debt, this generation of county employees and taxpayers are paying for a lot of liabilities of past generations that did not put money aside. You know, even this right now is paying a benefit that most of our employees aren't going to get. And it's really kind of sucks. You know, basically, we're having to reduce staff members to pay for past retirees that are long gone from our system, a benefit that these employees will never get that same benefit. So it's really, you know, to me, it's a good reminder, though also as a warning for us all, that we don't want to, we don't want to do this to the next generation of board members, where we hand them a pile of liabilities that they have to struggle through. And, you know, for us to go from 0% funded to 100% funded from 2014 to 2034 is a huge success story. Wish Andy Caldwell was still in the room to hear that and see these numbers, because, you know, everywhere I'd go, I'd hear about how bankrupt the county is and how fiscally irresponsible we are. And I, I spend a lot of my time trying to educate people on how fiscally responsible this board is. You know, we may be progressive on other things, but very conservative fiscally here. And we've, and this really shows in these numbers. And so I just wanted to just pat, you know, the past board members and Budget Staff and the entire county on their fiscal responsibility and putting this first, and I just wanted to celebrate that. But I also just kind of want us all to be aware of what has happened in the past. And so we need to be very careful about that looks like, so that we don't fall back into those issues in the future and hand a pile of liabilities to the next generation. I think it's frankly unethical and, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't go down that route. So I'm, I don't think that's where we're going here. I think this is still responsible and responsive to our, response to our numbers. Bottom line, though, this strategy means potentially additional, you know, how is this going to help some of these other departments, right? You know, we just had social services. So if we're going to save 2.5% on payroll, is that going to kind of help absorb some of these costs potentially? I mean, I know you don't want to make any promises here. This isn't going to save the day, this isn't the big rescue plan, but this is going to hopefully maybe soften some of these things. Can you maybe just talk about that just for a minute, just so we can kind of? And also, that's good for, I think, even our, our labor groups to know, that we're doing things here to move numbers around to try to lessen the impact. We're not just going to go to labor groups and say, hey, we're going to do this on your backs. You know, this move right here probably means that there are people's jobs that will be saved, because going from 4% to 1.5%. And so I just want to make sure that that's out there for my colleagues and for the public and our employees to understand.
Supervisor Nelson through the chair, yeah, I think that's correct. Soften is a good word to use. It softens the impacts of the deficits these departments are seeing. Where they all see it, every department budget, salaries and benefits, all these different line items, OPEB is one of those line items in their budget, and it is exactly 4% of their salary costs, which is another line item. So every single department is going to see, in the rest of this fiscal year, we've budgeted to the 4%. So in the rest of this fiscal year, their, their actual hits every pay period are going to be less than anticipated, is going to create salary savings in each of their budgets. In the general fund, if that ends up with additional surplus, that falls back to the general fund at the end of this fiscal year. Departments like social services, public health, that, that lessens their, their costs in the year. So it helps them balance, maybe use less fund balance in public health case at the end of this fiscal year than they otherwise would have. DSS, maybe it's less general fund needed to cover their gap at the end of this fiscal year. In the ongoing '26-'27 budget, as we develop that in the coming months, we will build in, if your board approves this today, the 1.5% assumption instead of the 4%. And so everyone's OPEB line is going to be a much smaller number than the current adopted budget. So it will be a decrease, in some cases like DSS, I think it's $1.7 million or so, we'd anticipate that year over year to be a less amount for them, which will help offset other salary and benefit increases in that total object level and hopefully help, you know, keep their budget from growing more than it otherwise would have. It's not going to be enough to cover that 10 million plus number they were talking about earlier today, but it does help soften that.
So I'm supportive of this strategy with a caveat that I really want to hear from the CEO's office in the future. If this really starts to mine our funded percentage, you know, if we go from 59 now down to 57, and we start to see that dip, you know, I think, I want to see, I want, I'm hoping that you guys can come back to us and say, hey, guys, we, we thought 1.5 could do it, but it really needs to be 1.8. Because I just can, I just, at least we can just tread water. I think that's something that we can, we morally should be doing with this. And I think that number will actually naturally go down too, because we're, some of these that are receiving these benefits are probably dying off, right? Some of these retirees are no longer receive, are going on, it's true.
It's an aggressive plan.
Well, that's, that's how these, that's how these actuarials work, right?
Yep.
And then as they go on to other forms of healthcare, you know, that they might receive from, so they might not need the county's health plan. So, and I'm speaking that as a son of a county retiree, and I'm actually helping my mom with her stuff right now. So I know it pretty well. I see it on her, on a line on her, on her statement. So, and anyway, that's the caveat. I just, I hope that you guys would be responsible to us, and I'm sure you guys would. I just, I just want to say it out loud for my own, my own benefit, to make sure that we don't fall for the behind.
And just Supervisors, in our budget book, we always do prepare an update on what our unfunded liabilities are. So that's another way that it'll be evident to everybody.
Okay, Supervisor Levino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this, for me, is a little bit of a warning light, because I always looked at, I totally support this move, by the way. And I think this is the creative, the kind of look at things, the second glance at things that we're going to have to be doing a lot of going into the next year, is that, sure, we'd love to be at 4%. And I think the strategy is working, it's crushing. But whenever I heard we had budget issues, I always felt like, okay, it can't be that serious if we're not going after our entire OPEB payment that we're making, because we're really over, we're overpaying and we're being very strategic on how we do that. So this does, that warning light has popped up for me now that, yes, if we're going to go after OPEB, which to me is like kind of low-hanging fruit, we're on the right track. We're, we're looking at things holistically and we're saying, hey, where, where else can we find some of these, not easy wins, but this one's about as painless as it gets. We're still on track for the same goal that we had. And so I'm excited about this. I'm really glad you brought it forward and I would be totally in support. And I think I'm the only one that gets this benefit, so, on the board. Which I didn't even know about till Bob told me.
Okay. Do we have public comment on this item?
Chair Capes and members of the board, we have no request to speak from the public on this side.
Really? Okay. All righty. Any other comments from the board? Okay.
All right, I move staff recommendation A and B.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, for Budget Director. And we can adjourn. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving next week. Happy holidays.
Not next week.